Right, I was about to say.
Yeah, I think everybody's here for the same topic.
Yeah. Who knew there was a stir in the community about it?
Yeah, I know.
Good evening. Good evening and welcome to this board meeting. I have a couple of requests right as we begin. The first is one in light of safety and concern. I please ask that you keep this central corridor to the exit as wide as the doorway. So if the folks on the aisle could move their chairs. And the second is...
Is that being great?
No, I'm talking about, and you can certainly stand inside the room. I apologize that we don't have the space for everyone to stand outside the room. I also need to try to keep this doorway open for fire exit as well. So if you're in that doorway and you can come inside, I appreciate everyone who has turned out tonight. So I will call this meeting to order. Attendance.
Nordike.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Dee Peterson.
Here.
Jay Peterson.
Here.
Boss Ward.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again. In our agenda items, at this time, we have visitors to be heard before we move into that section. I do want to comment that we will call for public comment on item B of new business, the second reading of the policy on gender equity and inclusiveness. And I will also call for a separate public comment on item D, which is a discussion of library book selection, as they appear on the agenda. The agenda did have a tanager happenings. In the interest of time, we are not going to have that particular report this evening. And so at this time, I will ask if there are any members of the public who wish to address the board on any issue on the agenda that is not item B or item D. And in doing so, please note that there will be no action taken on this item, and please refrain from using the names of personnel or students in the district. Seeing none, we'll move on to our approval of the agenda. We do have one change to the agenda that I believe was sent out, but we'll make the announcement for the public. We have an item G, which is the hiring of two individuals, and since they were not released earlier, they are under new business and not part of the consent agenda. Mr. Alvey, are there any other changes?
None.
None? Board members, any changes? Okay. So I do need a motion to accept the amended agenda, adding item G, hiring of new personnel.
Motion to approve the agenda.
By Rachel.
Second.
And Jim. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Abstentions? Agenda is approved. Second item is the indication of conflicts of interest. I've reviewed the agenda and have no conflicts.
Mrs. Rachel, I have none.
Jim, I have none.
Carol, I have none.
Shane, I have none.
Very good. That moves us on to our consent agenda items. This includes the approval of minutes from the past meeting, any open enrollments, the published new hires, resignations, and bills. Just for the public's knowledge, all of the consent agenda items do appear in the minutes. So you'll be able to see all of this, but we don't discuss them each individually. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone wishes to remove and move into new business? No? Okay. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
By Carol.
Second.
Second by Shane. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Abstentions? Consent items are approved. That brings us to unfinished business. Mr. Alvey, facilities review.
Yes. This evening, we're happy to report that we've done our first public meeting for the new elementary school. We had that on November 1st. We had a listening session at the middle school. We had a good discussion with the public, some staff, as well as access with our architect to show some of the upcoming features, take feedback about the potential building, some of its constraints, and potentially some of its, you know, potential for the future needs of the district. Then on November 5th, we also had our building committee do a school visit to Harrisburg, where we were able to see two of their newest buildings. And so our committee members include administrators, staff from the district, as well as USD faculty and parents. And those folks were able to attend and ask questions of the folks in Harrisburg about their two latest buildings. And November 9th, tomorrow, our architect will meet with our school of people from both Austin and Jolly, as well as our custodial staff, to gain feedback about the potential building that's coming their direction. We continue to have our weekly district meetings for the progress reports of the district's building. We also have an aggressive timeframe that would include getting our drawings done in November, December, with final board approval coming in January, and then hopefully to let out bids in February, March for the building project to hopefully begin in the summer of 2022. So there's a lot of exciting things happening with the building committee and those folks that are part of that. And once again, we'd encourage anybody in the public that might have questions or concerns to just reach out to the building principals or myself at Central Administration, and we can give you some feedback and try to answer your questions if you have anything to offer on the new elementary school. So exciting times, and we're really glad to kind of get this ball rolling for the good of the students in our community.
Can you comment on the extent to where... So we still have kind of the initial draft layout that was just a potential draft. Are those being changed, or when will there be changes reflected based upon community input? Because I've heard that, like, well, you know, there's specific concerns about this, but it's still in the draft. It's like, but the draft is still a draft. You know, when will some of those things be reflected?
In your packets, the board packet, you saw the most recent rendering of that drawing, and it's something that we can place on our website for more public input as well. But we are addressing those things that come up to us. So again, if somebody is seeing a draft that they're having questions about, they should contact one of us about that. But at this point, the architect has put in all of the classrooms, all of the specials, all of our team teaching facilities, our special education and resources rooms, gymnasiums, admin, school nurses. So most of the flexible space is taking solid shape by now. So we will make sure that this continues to be updated on our website, but really, at each of these weekly meetings, this continues to get fine tuned.
I know that there's been multiple concerns raised about the special ed room not being in a place where it has eye level windows. Is that something that's still in the works of being addressed to try to find a space where people are at all day that don't have the eye level windows?
That is still being discussed, but to be honest, there's going to be give and take with this design. If any design, there's going to be somebody that's in the interior walls of this building. And as we've explained throughout the process, it's our architect has created a cantaloupe window system that has lights that are windows and natural light that comes in above the ceiling level. So it would either have to take the place of a first grade, second grade, third grade classroom, for example, or we have to use the space in the middle with team teaching, special services, resource room, art room, and flexible space. So something in those building design will have to give with only getting cantaloupe lighting versus window side, at height window light.
Okay. Moving on. Pull it up later.
Yes, really no new news to report there. The same data that I sent out last week to our patrons into our school board, we had two active cases in the district last week, and two active cases were in the high school. So of our 1,450 occupants in our buildings, we had two cases.
Okay. Moving on. New business. Item A, our fall enrollment. Some good news.
Absolutely. We had speculated this along the beginning of the school term, but officially, the last Friday in September is the actual count date that schools receive their official count of students that are coming and going in their district. Our district count numbers were 1,344. So we are up 85 students from last year in May. So pretty excited about the fact that we've grown by that. And there are some challenges when you have 85 new students in the building, but there are certainly some great opportunities with having that many new students in the district as well.
And we don't need any action on item A?
Nope, just FYI.
Okay, that brings us to item B, the second reading of policy, gender equity and access. We do have, I will now call for public comment. I have all of the names for people who've signed up, and when I'm finished with that, I will certainly open the floor. We absolutely wish to hear from as many and all of you, but in order to do that, I will ask that you please try to keep your comments to three minutes. At about five minutes, we're going to try to, we will put a hard stop on that in the interest of making sure everyone has an opportunity to speak. Before I call the first name, I do want to make one additional comment, and that is, I've had the opportunity to do a couple of interviews, and I'm disappointed that one comment in particular has never made print. And that is this, that I am, and I have said this to media outlets, I am incredibly proud of the passion and the concern that the community has shown and the civility with which they have discussed a topic that in other parts of the country has resulted in name-calling and physical violence. I think we can continue to be an example for the rest of the country of how you address and talk about issues such as this. So with that, first person who signed up tonight, Ryan Church. When we get to that, while Ryan's approaching, if we get to offer this, please do state your name. It's always helpful to restate your name when you approach the podium. The microphone, the screen is the one that's on. Ryan, podium is yours.
Ryan Church. Well, I hate to be the first one to contradict you, Doug, because up until about three hours ago, I was the sponsor of a petition in Vermillion to oppose this bill, or sorry, this policy. Since I put my name to the opposition of this policy, I have been called a transphobe. I've been called a homophobe. I've been told my ideas are filled with hate and violence. I just want to make that very clear, that I am not a transphobe. I'm not a homophobe. I do not have hate or violence towards anyone in this community. My idea used to be to live and let others live. This policy started off as just an equal bathroom rights issue. I was 50/50 on the matter. I had no real strong opinions one way or another. Somebody wants to use a bathroom, they should be allowed to. What I have a severe problem with is this policy has morphed from just a bathroom equality issue into something much larger. We're now allowing students to share beds with each other on school trips. We're allowing children to shower together in non-gender-specific bathroom shower or locker room showers. They're changing in the same locker rooms, and that's what I have a problem with, not because trans, binary, cis, et cetera. I have a problem because I feel that that disrupts children's innocence. While I don't believe many will take advantage of this policy, I think we've seen across the nation that there are some that are evil. They do have evil in their hearts. They are mean spirited, and they will attempt to use this policy to exploit our young ones. I'm a father of two in this school district. My children are very young, so they will be in this school district for a very long time. I do not want their innocence destroyed because we can't stop people from threatening with lawsuits because they don't get their way. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Jorgensen. I am here representing myself and my family and not my employer. The only reason we are having this conversation is because we collect birth certificates upon enrollment. You do not know what is on my birth certificate, and I don't know what is on yours. You assume my gender because of the way I present and the way I look. We need to afford these students the same courtesy. For this reason, I continue to be in full support of this policy. Thank you.
My name is Mike Phelan. Board members, thank you for your time and effort in addressing this policy and this issue this past couple of months. I am the parent of two young children in the district as well, and I strongly urge you to vote in favor of this policy. At the beginning of the school year, the board was asked to live up to the nondiscrimination language already part of your policies. Gender identity is a protected characteristic in that list. The board, at the first meeting, quickly agreed that the current practice was not living up to that standard. At one of our first meetings on the issue, Jim McCullough urged you to act quickly to approve a change, noting that the district was open to a lawsuit, a lawsuit it would very likely lose. Across the country, district and appellate courts have decided in favor of transgender students seeking to use restroom and locker room facilities that align with the gender identity they insistently, consistently, and persistently affirm. School districts on the losing side of those cases have had to pay millions in penalties and court costs. The Department of Justice's Office of Civil Rights specifically lists denying transgender students access to appropriate bathrooms as the type of thing that would spark an investigation for them. Mr. McCullough told you that a policy like the one that you're voting on tonight was the prudent thing to do. It is also a morally right thing to do and an option that lets all students in Vermillion Public Schools know you support them. You've heard from experts in this field that gender-affirming school policies save trans kids' lives. You've heard letters read on behalf of multiple trans students and their families about how current policies are hurting them. You've heard from students who have transgender friends tell you that they support this policy because they know it will help their peers' mental health. Those of us supporting this policy have shown you the research on why this policy will protect our district's children, will keep all children in our district safe. On the other side, you've also heard from parents worried about keeping their children safe, and that's admirable. All of us here want safe kids in our district. But there is no evidence to suggest that this policy will add any danger for any student. Transgender kids are not monsters looking to assault people in the bathroom. To believe those arguing against this policy means believing that our schools are rampant with kids who are itching to assault somebody in a bathroom, but also that they're being stopped by a little plastic sign on the door. And those two things don't make sense to me together. I believe the students in our schools are good. They're not assaulting each other, other places. They're not going to jump into the bathroom and start assaulting each other. States and cities and school districts all over the country have had gender-affirming bathroom and locker room policies in place for quite a while now. The actual evidence says that these policies decrease violence. The entire state of Iowa has had a policy like the one you're considering in place for more than a decade without issue. Those of you who work at large companies know that in the Bostock versus Clayton County Supreme Court decision last summer, companies have been forbidden to discriminate against transgender employees, and we have not seen a large outbreak of violence perpetrated by transgender individuals. Next Saturday, November 20th, marks the Transgender Day of Remembrance that honors transgender people whose lives were lost in acts of anti-transgender violence. The list of names on that list regularly reaches numbers that would break your heart. Thirty-seven people in our country were killed last year specifically because they were transgender, and that's not including a large number of suicides from transgender students and adults who didn't have the support of their communities. I stand before you tonight, as I've stood before you at every meeting this year on this topic, because I want next year's list of names to be shorter. I don't want a single Vermillion kid's name on that list. I urge you to vote in favor of this policy, letting transgender students in our districts know that they are loved, they are supported, and they are valued in Vermillion. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Garrish, and I'm a community member. I have two little kids who are not yet of age to come to the school district, but we can't wait to be tannitors soon. So I'm here tonight to support you in voting yes on the policy that's presented to you. After last week's meeting, I was a little discouraged, and some of it is because of the rhetoric and all of that that's being broadcast, but really, I was thinking, they don't really know how much support is out there, and that's on us, right? We have to tell you, we have to be here, we have to show up. So it's easy for me, this is an easy decision for me, right? I think this policy is reasonable, it's straightforward, it's lawful, but it's so many things that make Vermillion what it is. It's welcoming, it's empathetic, it's understanding. This is Vermillion. We just don't tolerate each other's differences. We welcome them and we celebrate them. So I made a petition. I was, it was 7:00 AM on Wednesday, I was at the Sioux Falls Airport, I made it, and by the time I landed in Chicago, I had 300 signatures. And since you've heard a lot of anecdotal research and evidence, here's some data for you. As of today, we had 1,000, we had over 1,000 people sign before I walked into this room. And now, I don't want to tell you that all these people live here, because that is actually not the truth. So what I did this weekend with some help from my friends and colleagues is I made you a breakdown of what I know about the people who signed this petition. So I did this, I updated it at 2:30, so this, these numbers have changed. As of 2:30, we had 975 total signatures. That number's now over 1,000. At that point, we had 191 community members, almost 90% of them were parents of kids in the school district, and that number is over 200 at this point. At that point that I can identify, we had 130 USD students sign, and I don't know all the USD students, but there's a lot of other people on that, and their names are all here for you. This is a really exciting number that I want to tell you. We had 24, as of earlier today, Vermillion Public School students sign this petition. They are current students, they are your number one constituents. We had over 30 Vermillion Public School graduates sign this, so people who live elsewhere perhaps, but graduated, and there's some really interesting comments in the comment section that are also provided for you. A lot of the other people that signed are alumni of USD, they're former community members. There are potential people that wanted to move to Vermillion. There are people that perhaps wanted to go to USD for school. There are all sorts of people that sign this, and yes, there are people who are just really passionate about this issue that live all over the world that signed as well. And I mean, that's exciting, but you want to see the people that are going to be impacted by this, and I understand this. I do have five copies here, and I'm happy to bring them up to you. So I want you to look at that. I want you to have some data and some, understand who's actually in support of this issue. I ask you to be brave. I ask you to be brave like these kids. I know this isn't easy. You've sat through a lot of really long meetings, but I ask you to vote yes. And the last thing I think you need to hear, because it affects every single other comment, is that trans boys are boys and trans girls are girls. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the board. I am very happy to be standing in front of you tonight. I am a member of the Vermillion community. I do not have a child in the district, and frankly, I wasn't going to speak because of that, but as I have followed this policy and this policy conversation, and I have followed it very closely, I was struck by a couple of things that I just thought were important to bring to the board's attention as you were thinking about this. Proponents of the gender equity policy have provided you with a raft of evidence that this policy is needed, but opponents have also given you evidence that this policy is needed. Over the last several months, you have heard parents express their fear of transgender people. They have told you that their children are afraid of transgender people being in the same bathroom with them. They have told you that they believe that transgender children being in the same, that transgender, gender, sorry, children and their parents are making choices that are contrary to God's will, so much that they are at risk of eternal damnation. Why is this important? We are not born afraid of transgender people. This is a learned response. This is a learned response. So what we know is that these children have been taught to be fearful of transgender people. Fear breeds contempt. Contempt breeds demonization. Demonization and dehumanization breed violence. Parents of transgender children cannot stand in front of you and tell you how they agonize over how to keep their children safe and healthy, because to do so would be to expose their children, to make them poster children for this issue, and to risk their health and safety. The decision you have before you is only difficult if you ignore the actual dangers and buy into the myths and misconceptions about what it means to be a transgender child, and also if you buy into myths and misconceptions of what public bathrooms are like. In my 50 years nearly on this planet, my god, I can't believe I'm an adult, I have never seen another person's genitals in a public bathroom. There are a couple of issues that I think are really important, because they are misconceptions that have been brought in front of this board over the course of several meetings that just need to be set straight. The first one is that creation and implementation of this policy is somehow precipitous. This issue was first brought to this board's attention in May of 2017, when community members and experts begged this board to put together a policy for transgender children, and the board chose to do nothing. This was also reported in May 2017 in the Vermillion Plain Talk. Imagine the hypothetical transgender child that started school in the school year of 2017. She started kindergarten and went through it without a policy. She went through first grade without a policy, she went through second grade without a policy, she went through third grade without a policy, and will now complete at least half of her fourth grade year without a policy in place. There are kids who were in eighth grade at the time you were first asked to address this issue, who will graduate from school maybe having two months of a policy in place. And that policy is just a respect for their identity, a respect for their identity in school. If we could just pause for a second and think about that, aside from family, what more important place is there? What more important environment is there for you to have your identity affirmed and respected than in school? Every child deserves that. You are not being precipitous in passing this policy. Indeed, with all due respect, this body has been derelict for nearly five years in addressing it. The second misconception is that this policy has somehow been sprung upon the public without due consideration and opportunities to be heard. In addition to the fact that this has been an issue that this board has been aware of for five years, this board has been holding public hearings and discussing this policy for months. It was discussed at the following meetings, August 24, 2021, Item 3722, and August 27, Plain Talk piece was published on it. On August 30th, it was Item 5822, and a September 3rd piece was published in the Plain Talk. On September 22nd, it was Item 11022. On October 12th, it was Item 8122. On October 15th, another piece was in the Plain Talk about it. And on November 2nd, 2021, more community members provided additional public comment on this issue before you passed your first reading. These meetings were public, the meeting agendas and minutes were published and easily accessible to the public. And at the November 2nd meeting, this board deleted portions of the policy for reconsideration after the new year, which means you're going to start this all over again in January. And now here we are, again, discussing this issue with the public. There is nothing new, surprising, or out of order in the method by which this policy was proposed. And then the last thing, and I promise I will make this very quick, that there is some question aside from what is the law and what is your duty with regard to this policy is the final misconception. Your primary function is to craft and enforce policy for this school district. You have been unequivocally alerted by legal counsel that the current district's practices are in derogation of the law. Schools are places where we teach students about their responsibilities as citizens, about the rule of law, and about the importance of doing the right thing. A school district that is not complying with the law is not teaching those lessons. Perhaps worse, it is actively instilling distrust and disdain for local government in the hearts of kids who are not even old enough to vote. You need a policy. Administrators and teachers need guidance. This is not a hard decision. Children are in danger, the district is violating the law, you have a duty, and I appreciate very much your willingness to do it. Thank you.
I'm Donna Schaefer, and I've taught in the Vermillion School District for 23 years, and I'm experienced with elementary children. I'm afraid that we are so concerned about one group of children that we are going to neglect the other group. It's exchanging priorities, and it's not keeping everybody, not thinking about everybody in this situation. I can tell you, for instance, I was a tomboy. I could beat the boys in running, I bloodied a boy's nose, but not once did I consider myself a boy. And I'm not saying that... What I am saying is, if I would have gone to the bathroom, with the boys' bathroom, they would have beat me up. If they would have come to my bathroom, I would have been upset. Whenever I would approach the bathroom, in the boys' bathroom at school, they were just so old, just could not stand the fact that I was going to be in the bathroom, or any girl would be in the boys' bathroom, and vice versa. And I'm saying, yes, we do need to make places for those children who are not certain exactly what their gender is, or I think their gender is different than what is noticeable. And I think we have done that, we have, especially in the high school and the middle school, and we maybe do something more in the elementary grades, but we do not, I just don't think it is fair to the majority to make it possible for the minority to do, make them more comfortable, because then the other ones will be uncomfortable. I think you really need to think about that. There are things that bother children that don't bother their adults, and we need to think about children as being children and not being an adult. And I have a grandson who is gay, and I love him dearly, but he also appreciates me and gives me the ability to think what I think, and he loves me anyway, and I love him anyway. It has nothing to do with that. But I really and truly believe that there are going to be a lot of kids in the elementary department that will sit there and wet their pants rather than go into a bathroom where they think there's going to be a boy in it, or there's going to be a girl in it. And I think we need to give consideration to that. That's all.
Mark Daniels.
I'm really grateful to come here. Mark Daniels is my name. I have a student in the school system, I've had five others who've gone through the school system, and I'm really grateful to be here. I'm grateful for people who talk in considerate ways with each other, you know, who share different viewpoints and opinions, and, you know, I've really been impressed with the school board and your efforts to address the different voices that have been here, heard, and the superintendent as well. I mean, I think it's really amazing. I think we're really looking at some issues, addressing security and privacy for our students that are really issues not even related to one's gender identity. I mean, I think students have been having issues for years and years to go into showers and not have, some students not have privacy, and so I think we're really making wonderful progress. Of course, I'm here, I want to support the policy. I think it's remarkable what you've done. You know, we started, my first meeting was on the anniversary of the March on Washington, and I wanted to share, I think this is a civil rights issue. I mean, this is, I mean, as nice as it was, and thank you for the wonderful support numbers we had, but I don't think this is a vote. I mean, I don't think this is a, we put it up for public policy vote. This is, these are moral, civil rights issues about how we treat one another, and we don't vote on which groups we treat one way or which groups we treat another way. We treat people with dignity, with respect, we value each person, and so I'd like to just suggest that the board really take that into consideration. We've been spending a lot of time in our country over our history trying to correct some of the mistakes we've made over the years, and trying to provide opportunities for all of our citizens, and I just want to encourage us to do that same thing, and I want to, once again, say thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for, the school board, for what you do for us. We appreciate what you do for our children. I'm very concerned as a father about this policy and the safety of my kids, and I'm not trying to malign anybody, but there is a lot of fear, there's a lot of things going on in our nation that have pointed to this is opening the door for abuse. Bad policy opens the door for abuse. We've talked about, well, our staff are going to police better, our staff are going to do more, our staff are busy giving our kids the best education possible, they can't be everywhere, they can't be everywhere. And sometimes we confuse the fundamental differences between a young man and a woman. Young men have sexual drives, no matter how they dress, or how they, you know, they have sexual drives, and there's going to come a point, maybe it's not the first year, maybe it's not the second year, where that's going to take over, and something's going to happen. Somebody, and you guys are going to be accountable for that. That's on you. I love these kids, I love all people, from the sincerest of my heart, but we have an identity crisis, and we've lied to you and told you that your gender can shift, you can change gender, that you weren't given, you weren't created with a beautiful gender that God gave you, and He loves you just the way you are. You can't change it. And we've created an identity crisis where we've told kids, you can change, you can be whatever we want, and we've created an epidemic in our nation, an epidemic of suicide, of depression, of debt, because people don't know who they are. And this school board, by our policy, by what we do, what we say, we're speaking, we're saying, that's okay, and what's it's going to do to all the kids who maybe are firm in who they are, it's going to confuse them more, and say, well, maybe you're not who you thought you are, maybe God didn't make you this way, maybe you were made in this image, and, oh, and so we have this epidemic, we have this crisis, and a lot of people are dying, many people are taking their lives. But we have the answers. It's bad policy, it's bad policy that opens these doors, and this policy is based on fear. It's based on fear of, we're going to sue you if you don't do that. That's not a healthy policy, that's not a good way to go about it, and we don't want that. We don't want anybody to lose their life, but we want truth, we want truth. And I'm here, I felt very compelled to speak truth, that your gender does not change, that your gender does not change. God made you in a certain way, and He loves you very much, but we're not going to find who we are and who we're created to be until we're walking in what we're created for. And so if I'm pretending to be something I'm not, I'm never going to find happiness. And we're speaking to this message to all of our kids, well, maybe you're not what you were created, maybe you're not what you're, and they're going to be confused, and they're going to be frustrated, and they're going to go down paths of darkness that I have counseled and worked with many people to try to come out of and get free from. Well, there is an answer, there is an answer to the freedom that we seek. We know there's a freedom, but it's not available in this policy that we're pushing. This policy is going to further confuse a generation and speak lies to people and children. And so I encourage you to reject this policy.
Liz Develder.
Keeping this very short, I'm fully in support of the gender equity and access policy. This policy affirms that the Vermillion School District supports all of our students. It is important that we support all diversity in our schools, race, color, religion, disability, and gender identity. Thank you to the board for your time on this important issue, I'm sure it has not been all joy. Thank you to Mr. Elby and the principals, because you've been working quickly to make changes and plans for things in the future, and thank you for putting in all of that work. Everyone wants and deserves privacy in restrooms and locker rooms, it is not just transgender individuals. Please vote for the gender equity and access policy.
Catherine Berkland.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Berkland, thank you for the time tonight. I wanted to thank you for serving on the school board. My comments are directed at you. I will not spend your time tonight trying to convince all of them that they should think like me. I believe that you value all children in the district, I truly believe that. I truly believe that you do not agree with those who would insinuate that transgender students shouldn't exist. I don't believe you think that. I think you think that trans kids are tannagers, the same way all kids are tannagers. I truly believe that you think that, they're us. I believe that you understand the fiduciary and legal obligations that are facing you. I believe that you understand civil rights law, and you've had legal counsel, and you understand that your job is to provide an experience for all students that does not require revealing private information by wanting to use the restroom. I believed you when you said you wanted more time to learn more. We've been talking about this for a while, and you asked for more time. I believe that you used your time to do that. I believe that you looked at the cases that the other side has used, that the opposition has given you as a cause for why you should oppose this. I believe you have evaluated whether those cases have merit to be included in your discussion or not. I hope that you have used your ability to read their statements and noticed the number of times that they use the word "those kids" rather than "our kids," because trans kids are not those kids. They're not those kids who happen to not know what they're doing, they're not those kids who just want to be in class and use the same bathroom. They're our kids, they're tannagers. Lastly, excuse me, this one's a little hard for me, but I've done this sort of thing, where you have to sit and make a hard choice, and I expect that you have your decision already made up. I would expect that you did. I don't expect you to show up to a meeting like this and be able to change your mind. That's not how you should make decisions on the spur of the moment. I hope that you have done your research, I hope that you have talked to lots of people. Most of us here tonight came to say our piece. We came to have our three minutes. We came to be on record as supporters when our children ask us if we stood up when their classmates were being targeted and excluded. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Taggart.
Beyond, oh, Sarah Taggart, beyond the fact that this policy denies biology and science, forces people to use language and action showing conformity to an ideology with which they may not agree, and promotes the belief of gender identity as the belief of the entire school, the more egregious result... school, the more egregious result of this policy is that it places at risk all students, trans students as well as the general population. Students have sex-based rights to sex-exclusive bathrooms, locker rooms, hotel rooms, and beds. Female students' rights are not subordinate to a male student's desire to be seen as female, nor are male students' rights subordinate to a female's desire to be seen as male. The compromised position this policy would place students in should outrage all parents, for the parent that teaches their kid of the importance of modesty and sexual morality, putting a student in a bathroom or locker room with one of the opposite sex completely undermines their teaching. To allow students to be exposed to the anatomy of the opposite sex violates their rights, their safety, and their dignity, and while showers in the locker rooms may at some point be remodeled to become private, nothing prohibits students in the common area of locker rooms from walking around undressed. The overnight accommodations guidelines being pushed forth by this board are shocking. For members of this board to not only approve, but to encourage students of the opposite sex to sleep in the same room and share the same bed, bed, is not just evil, but criminal. You are absolutely setting these kids up for failure and putting them in a position where very few students would feel comfortable. Students put in this position may lack the courage to express their discomfort due to pressure from teammates to simply go along. To put a biological female in a bed with a biological male at a school-sponsored event could not be more wrong. Do I need to describe all that could happen? Do I need to describe to you what could be alleged to have happened? I'm sure proponents of this policy will agree that these students persistently, consistently, and insistently identify as the gender of, of others in the room. That does not make them the same sex as others in the room, nor does this give them the same biology. And, what about the gender fluid who may not reveal this tendency? What about the transgender homosexual? The thought of putting a biological male with a biological female in the same bed, thinking this is okay, is completely, complete, shows complete apathy for girls and utter disregard for their safety, and while society, while, while as a society we see more attention paid to the sexual safety of girls, I am equally concerned about the compromising position this would put our boys in. To allow, encourage, and promote having three boys in a room with a biological female, and one of them sharing a bed with that female, shows complete neglect for the well-being of both sexes. It would take just one false allegation of sexual assault, assault to ruin that boy's life. It would take just one evil action by a predatory male to deeply harm that female. And, I might add, in an effort to maintain privacy of the transgender student, these mixed-sexed hotel room arrangements can all be done unbeknownst to the parent and student. And this could all happen because of an ill-conceived policy shoved forward by agenda-driven members of this board. Tasked with the responsibility of overseeing the safety and education of our children, you choose to push upon us an ideology, an ideology with which the vast majority disagree, and place our children in a situation that could damage their lives. Blame for any altercation that would occur from this policy is to be, be put directly on members of this, this board who vote for this. This is as shameful as it gets. And let me also point out that this undermines parental rights, by imposing no obligation on the part of the school to inform parents of a student's change in behavior regarding sexual identity is negligent. Keeping secrets from parents is a tactic, is a tactic of cults and abusers, and should never be the practice of a school district. This policy violates religious rights, is, is an offense, is an offense to the large majority of families in this district, and forces them to conform. Everything in this policy is about accommodating and affirming the transgender student at the expense of the general population. This policy is one-sided and does nothing to protect the rights and safety of all students. Thank you to board members rejecting this harmful policy. I urge those of you who voted for this policy to vote the other way tonight. Please consider focusing on improving current practices, upgrading facilities, and put, and, and put no policy in place. Thank you.
Excuse me, Todd Nelson, I am here tonight in opposition to this policy. Legal counsel has previously said this board needed to slow down this process, yet those comments were immediately met by board members saying it needed, needed to be hurried up. During school board debate prior to this election, that created this current school board, no questions were asked about creating policies like this. No statements were made by candidates admitting this is the agenda that would be immediately pushed. No other school in South Dakota is doing this, yet some on this board say it is so urgent we have to schedule special meetings to hurry it along, because there is no other option but to act now. Same bathroom policy was put in place by another school board in Virginia. As a result, a biological boy took advantage of it and raped two girls tragically at different schools. This, these assaults were a direct result of the opportunity this policy creates that so many of us fear as parents. The lives of those two young girls in Virginia and the lives of their families are forever changed in a horrible way. When a child experiences this trauma, they suffer a lifetime of issues. These include higher levels of depression, guilt, body issues, nightmares, flashbacks, difficulty in building trust, fear of intimacy, PTSD, sleep disorders, anger, feelings of powerlessness, shame, self-blame, eating disorders, anxiety, denial, sexual problems, and long-term relationship goals. There are, these are the direct lifelong effects you are potentially opening up for my girls and every other child in the Vermillion Public School District. There would be nothing stopping incidents like this from happening here. As a father of girls, I can only beg you to end this tonight. The comment as made by this board is scared of being sued by transgender students. I respect everyone, I do not fear trans people, that's respectful. I fear the opportunity that this policy creates for bad people to take advantage of it, that is what I fear as a father of two girls, by far, and, and that's really what it comes down to. This process has been sloppy and hurried, some on this board have ignored legal counsel advice and completely disregarded public concerns. I pray there are three of you that will stand against this and vote no. Thank you for your time.
If I could request, the, I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak, and the 15 to 30 seconds of applause between every speaker doesn't help accommodate that. So next.
Doug, can I make a comment?
You may comment.
We've heard several people comment, both, we've heard several people comment, both in public comment time and in emails that we've received, mention of the case in Virginia. I think that we know more about the situation that happened in Loudoun County. It's my understanding that the incident happened two months prior to a school board adopting a similar policy. It's my understanding that the parties had had consensual sex in the bathroom twice prior to the incident, and that this, there was a student that was raped, and the male student has been found guilty. It's my understanding that that situation has nothing to do with transgender or restroom policy. So I just want to make that clear as we continue with the public comment.
Philip.
Pick the perfect person to end the applause for, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for taking the time to hear me. My name is Philip Twilliger, my wife Lisa and I have lived here for the past 16 years, and have two children in the school right, in the school district right now. I should start by strongly suggesting that this board take the advice of its attorney. He can surely advise you appropriately, I suspect his advice will include that discrimination based on gender identity is sex discrimination prohibited by federal law. That should be enough, but I certainly understand the personal nature of the issue, so please allow me to speak briefly personally, too. We, like most parents, do our best to teach our children to respect themselves and others. We research parenting techniques, we reward good behavior, we give consequences for bad behavior, but what is the most effective parenting technique? It's teaching by example. I admit that this is often the most difficult techniques, technique for us parents, we want our kids to eat healthy, but we don't always eat healthy ourselves, we want our kids to be friendly with everyone, but then we adults demonstrate hatred towards people based on political affiliation, religious beliefs, or some divisive topic. May we please for once demonstrate respect and love for ourselves and others by setting the example for our children. I cannot in good conscience tell my children that they should love and respect everyone, and then advocate the ostracization of people based on gender identity. I have a friend who expressed concern with the difficulty of explaining gender identity to her children, I presume others share this concern. Please consider, however, that children are perfectly used to being taught new things. In the grand scheme, this is a very easy one. The kids can and do understand this topic. It seems to me that children are predisposed to being caring and accepting of others. It is we, the adults, who teach them by example how to exclude, insult, and hate. Let's lead by example on this one, please adopt this policy, thank you for your time.
It's better, we're getting there. Glenn Pulse.
Hello, Glenn Pulse, I just want to say, there's been so many good points made today, I'm not going to rehash a whole bunch of them, but one thing I do respect about the Vermillion community is their diversity, I love it, that's why, that's why I live here and continue to live here, I love the different ethnicities, the different groups of people, I love all the conversations that we can have without coming at each other's throats, I love that, and I think that even with this situation tonight, I think that discussion should continue. I raised three girls, I have a granddaughter that is in the Vermillion School District right now, the policy does concern me as it's, as it's written, I think the, when we raise our children, and if everything's applied, like it normally is in Vermillion, I've got friends of, of every gender, of every, every type you could think of in this room, and I have customers, too, I love none of them any more or less than the other, and I think when we foster that environment in our school and our community, a lot of these policies are not needed, that's, that's my personal feeling. Do I think students need protections? Yes, but I think that the focus should be on providing privacy in our schools, if it's needed, and I, I do believe it is needed in the showers, in the bathrooms, and in overnight stays, and I think any bullying that would happen because of a transgender issue or, or not, should be addressed immediately and vigorously, because everybody deserves a chance. I love all these kids equally, it doesn't matter to me whether they're gay, straight, transgender, I don't care, I love them equally across the board, and I think most, everybody in this room does also, and I think when we foster that environment, we don't need a policy like this. So I, I would just ask that the focus be on updating the facilities to accommodate, rather than exclude. I have nieces and nephews that, as strange as it may sound, sometimes they, they feel guilty for being a boy or a girl with the current environment, the current discussions. You know, they ask questions about other possibilities. We should not have to be ashamed to be a boy or a girl. Our identity shouldn't be a shame, it should be celebrated, and I think by providing the opportunities in the school for privacy, and to prevent bullying, and to give everybody access to what their gender is, should be, and when I, when I say gender, what it is, when you, you're born a male, you're born a female, until you reach a certain age, that should be where you participate, in sports, in locker rooms, in bathrooms. So I encourage the board to strive for the privacy in the school, in the new schools being built, in retrofitting some of the other schools to provide that privacy, I urge you to vote no on the policy. Thank you.
First, let me say thank you to all of you who are sitting through this, I, I know you ran for this office, and this is what you agreed to take on, but there are always these issues that I'm sure that there are a number of you who are thinking, man, I could be home watching 911 on Fox right now. So, thank you for being patient with all of us. My name is Caitlin Collier, I have lived in Vermillion for most of the last 40, I think the last time I counted, 44 years. I've had two of my, my two biological daughters go through this school system, and since one of them just turned 40, you know that goes back pretty far, a foster child, a couple of children who could not be accommodated in the foster care system, who lived with me for a while. I have a granddaughter over at the middle school, I've been an attorney for over 30 years, I'm actually, as most of you don't know, a formerly ordained minister. I had this crazy idea that maybe the church would be a nicer place than a courtroom, who knew? But I also have something else I want to bring up. I was not born in South Dakota, I was born in the South, and until I was 12, no, until I was 19 years old, that's where I lived most of my life, in the South. So, when I hear words like accommodate, when I hear phrases like, we just want to be fair, and they're not thinking of others, I think of separate but equal, because I was living in the South when that was a policy. I started into sixth grade when segregation was ended in the southern community in which I lived, and what is horrifying to me is that I can remember very clearly many of these same phrases being used, and you doubt at all that it's a civil rights issue? I don't see how you can. Last Friday, I went to a memorial for Jim McCullough, who I have known since about 1978. You had the capable, intelligent advice from probably one of the best attorneys who ever practiced in this state, a man with a remarkable ability to read and to understand law, and he would never have suggested that anything that he recommended to you, anything that suggested that you could be putting yourself in a place of liability, would be anything other than the absolute truth. We seem to have a little problem in this county with people wanting to get sued. Now I realize, we don't have enough lawyers in Vermillion, but if you're thinking that maybe some of this kind of behavior of encouraging lawsuits would bring some more on, you may be right, I'm just thinking maybe we could just go to the law school and ask a few of them to come and practice here, but that's up to you.
Thank you. Dennis Johnson. Dennis Johnson.
Well, you can tell by the color of my hair that my children went through the Vermillion School System a number of years ago, but I haven't lost interest in school board policy, although I haven't taken a part in public discussions of that. There have been a lot of good things said tonight, I think, on both sides. There is one aspect, though, that has not been discussed at all, and so I'll limit my remarks to that one thing. And that one thing has to do with the policy with respect to sports activities. One of my children was a daughter, and it was a great thing for her when the Title IX came in and they had, you were required that girls be given the opportunity to play sports in the same way that boys were, but they were separate. You didn't put girls to run against boys. You didn't put girls on the football team. You didn't have girls competing with boys. I have a sentence or so of information here that I think is quite relevant. The fastest female sprinter in the world is American runner Allison Felix, a woman with more gold medals than Usain Bolt. I presume you know those names. Usain Bolt, male, probably more medals than any other male, but she has more, but was competing against females. Her lifetime best for the 400-meter run is 49.26 seconds. Based on 2018 data, nearly 300 high school boys in the U.S. alone could beat it. I suggest that a policy like this, which is being proposed, where we have sports activities, where the person who can compete in sports according to their own identity as seen by themselves, you're permitting and encouraging people to describe reality on their own. Reality is what they say it is. There is no such thing as reality, other than what the opinions of these people are. It's an intellectually indefensible position. And if this policy goes through, coming back to the sports activities again, then it'll take time, but you're going to have a lot of daughters who would have otherwise achieved a scholarship, who would have received trophies, and improved her leadership skills, that will no longer be able to do that. And why? Why, in the name of equity. It's not equity. You have to recognize that there's a difference between men and women, boys and girls. If you don't, well, you're just not paying attention.[811.44][811.44](applause)
Okay. Laura.
Hello. My name is Laura Weimers. I am standing up here today to ask you not to vote for this policy. When the idea for this policy was first presented, it spiraled into investigation for the school district, the board, and the parents. Members of the community and parents of students within the district have been addressing the board since that time, and many questions have arisen. I ask you not to vote for this policy because questions that these community members and parents have asked have yet to be answered. Some of the questions include: What will these bathrooms look like? Will there be changes to the bathrooms that parents with non-transgender children will need to discuss with their children? If someone were to be violated, who would be to blame? Where will be the accountability? What is the actual ratio of kids that want this? What would happen if someone is sexually assaulted by another student or even an adult? Have you asked teachers and administrators how they feel about this? If we instituted a change of policy, how would that look? A supporter of the policy asked, what if we expanded to three bathroom options to include female, male, and gender neutral? And why is that not an option? Will the students be surveyed so their opinions on this matter can be heard? Will someone be in the bathrooms and locker rooms to ensure safety? If this information is supposed to be kept confidential and others shouldn't know when someone who is transgender is in the bathroom at the same time as someone who is not transgender, how will the staff be kept informed of which students can use which bathrooms? What does the communication look like informing the students and parents if and when this policy passes? The majority of these questions came from individuals opposing the proposed policy, but leaving any questions unanswered leaves parents, like myself, whether in favor or not, with a lack of trust in the board and the district. As a parent of children who attend Vermillion School District, I am concerned with discussions that have been had amongst the board in direct relation to the policy, things such as the school not sharing information with me if my child goes to the school counselor about something. If my child wants to go to the school counselor to discuss his gender identity and request special accommodations, naturally I will be saddened that he did not feel he could talk to me about it, but I would be more concerned that the school, per the wording in this policy, would allow for him to make that choice independently and be accommodated. Suppose my child was suicidal and the only person they chose to speak with was their school counselor. Per the discussions that have been had, both by the board, the attorney, the school would not need to inform me as the parent unless I requested the documentation. The legal age to vote is in place for a reason. We did not ask the kids to vote on the recently passed school bond for construction of the new school. Why? It's their school. Why not let them vote? Because this was a decision made because they are still learning. Finally, I need help understanding why the urgency of changing this practice into a policy. I know there are some people who want this passed right away, but leaving questions unanswered and items not addressed indicates holes or potential flaws in the policy. People wouldn't have so many questions if the policy was worded in a way that satisfies all students, which, for you as board members, are serving. Please do not vote for this until all questions have been answered, all voices have been heard, and all of our children are thought about. Thank you.[1067.65][1067.65](applause)
Trish Unterbruner. I'm sorry, Trish.
Yeah, it's a nice long one. Very different that day. I was actually going to pass, but I kind of came up with something now, because I'm just disheartened by how our community is right now. It's so extremely separated by this topic. It is a huge, extreme topic for it all. I put it on you guys to somehow change or do something with this policy that brings people in the middle, because this is not going to work. You said the numbers are higher for the public schools right now, students. I'd hate for that to get lower. You know, I've already heard of people wanting to move, and I would hate for that for Vermillion. So there's just got to be something to just kind of bring things a little closer for each side. So, that's all I have to say.[1118.08][1118.08](applause)
Charles Phillips.
My name's Charles Phillips. I want to thank you first off for taking the time to let us all speak and for everybody coming this evening. I've got a little bit of a different take from what everybody's saying tonight, and I think first thing that I can say that everybody here, everybody here in this room can agree upon, is they want nothing more than the safety of our children. Trans, gay, bisexual, straight, doesn't matter. They are our children, and we want them to grow and thrive. I am speaking in opposal, or opposition, excuse me, and a couple of things that have been said tonight that kind of jumped out at me, apologize, I've been taking some notes One of the things that I've heard on the opponents to my belief is that, you know, a lot of people who are against it are so concerned about someone who's transgender is going to assault my eight-year-old daughter in the bathroom. That's not the case. I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned of exploitation. I'm concerned of people who aren't transgender who decide to utilize this policy. Going along with that, I'm concerned about exploration. These are children. A big part of what I want to talk about today is I want everybody to think back. We've all been to high school. We've all been to elementary school in one form or another, unless we were homeschooled. It was brought up, saving transgender kids' lives. I was doing a little bit of just taping here. Something I'm going to share with you guys here that a lot of people know, my friends do know, is I've actually been diagnosed bipolar about fourteen, thirteen, fourteen years ago. I went through high school as an undiagnosed bipolar disorder, type two. I've made horrible choices in my life and managed to turn my life around because I was not capable of making correct ones. Not hurting anybody, but I've made choices in my life because of this. And a little bit of research, according to a couple of things I've seen, I mean, trans community 2020 lost around 350 people. That's horrible. That's horrible. 2020, over 353 bipolars committed suicide, not counting that and all the other deaths. Why I bring this up is I went through this, and I can speak from this going, yes, there was bullying. A big guy, I got bullied for being fat, bullied for being different, bullied. But my family, my parents, my support structure taught me to be proud of myself. I think that's what we need to do with these children. These children being everybody, not these transgender, these straight, these children in our school districts need to be taught to love themselves. When it comes to the restroom policy, stalls, I guess I think it's a little bit redundant to have a bathroom. You go in and then have another bathroom to go in that's separate. Yes, females have stalls, males have stalls too, for number two, but the shower rooms, why go into a shower room just to go into another room? We've got separate rooms. Based upon your genitalia, I'm not going to say gender, I'm going to say genitalia. We've got this already. This is spending more money on something for feelings, and I'm going to bring that up. The law doesn't care about feelings. Facts don't care about feelings. Nobody cared about my feelings, and I had to grow up and go, okay, that's the way this world is. No one's going to coddle me, and I don't think we should coddle these children. I think they should be educated, and that's the purpose of the school and the school board. I think this is a huge decision. I think the overnight stays is ludicrous, and again, to me, it's more than taking advantage or attacks exploration. Why put something in that? Why make something harder than it has to be? I'm not transphobic, I'm not homophobic, I don't, personally, my belief is I don't care, as long as you're happy. Be with whoever you want to be with. Be whatever you want to be. I mean, I had four-inch-tall spiked blue hair when I was in college and piercings, because I thought that was going to make me happy. It didn't. It was a farce. Teach our children to love each other, love themselves, and provide assistance when need be, but don't, I would not have wanted anything for the school to change a darn thing just because I have my own mental disorder. That's me, I have to take care of it. I don't want you, or you, or you to go out of your way because you're worried about that making me feel comfortable. This is my life. I have to be happy with myself, and that's what we need to focus on, not intermingling genders into restrooms and changing rooms and overnight stays. Support our children, love our children, and teach them to love themselves, because doing this, I'm sorry, I understand the link to segregation in the past, I'm not talking about segregation. Integrate. Everybody should be integrated, that's fine. Go to school together, go to class together, do sports together, but it is the intermingling of genders in situations where, lack of a better term, nudity could come into play. I think if I would have walked into the females restroom when I was in high school, just because I honestly thought I felt like being transgender at that point in time when I was in high school, I would have been expelled on my rear end faster than you can say Lickety But you know what? I didn't want the world to change for me. Thank you.
Thank you.[1493.61][1493.61](applause) I am getting a report that our livestream is down. Do we know if that's back up?
I have texted it.
Okay, we will continue with the public comment that's here. Don DeLigne.
I will be very brief. You might have noticed, I'm old, so I don't have kids in school, but I'm still interested in the school and in the community, and I'm in favor of this policy. It strikes me that most of the comments against it are based on fear, and I'm sympathetic to that, but I think it's misplaced, and so I hope you will adopt the policy.
Thank you.[1544.46][1544.46](applause) Harvey Up.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Harvey Up, pastor here in Vermillion, and it seems to me in this time of history, we have a lot of people who want to be progressive for the sake of being progressive, and it's gone against human history. Obviously, I believe the Bible is the truth, it's enduring, it's everlasting, it tells us the true history of the actual history of the human race and human nature. It also tells us how government is to restrain evil. It tells us about the immoral acts that human beings are capable of. It's not just mere possibility these things happen. It's been said that we were concerned about just fear and so forth, and we want to protect, everyone wants to protect all our students, yes, on both sides, all of them, but it's not just a possibility. In spite of what was said about Loudon, what happened there, of course, is that now it's said that a judge found this boy guilty of sexual assault, and he entered masquerading as a girl then if the policy of transgender inclusion was not there, and he entered a girl's restroom masquerading as a girl. He's committed sexual assault and found guilty of a judge for that. How much more then will the doors be open to that with this policy if you approve it? How much more? It will happen. It will happen, in time, no doubt about it. And your names, if you approve this policy, will be appended to that, will go down in history as those who opened the door for this, who made it possible. Instead, any government, as I said, is to restrain evil. I urge you to be careful and to do what is right. We don't need this policy. Human beings have understood, male and female, throughout the centuries, throughout millennia. It's not hard to understand. And if you're going to say, well, we should just open up the restrooms for our students, whoever can come in, why are we doing that with adults? You know, I don't hear anyone clamoring for that in the public restrooms and so forth. You know, we care more about a few clamoring for something that they're confused about, quite actually, and need counseling about, than reality. Again, it will happen, and your names will be to it if you vote for this policy. When common sense and truth returns to our culture, if you vote against this and want to protect all, then your names will be on the right side. This is a blip in history that will pass. Common sense and truth will be upheld. You know that, I think you know that, all, we know that in our hearts. Please vote no against this proposed policy. Thank you.[1730.61][1730.61](applause)
April Carville.
It's not you.
I'm sorry.
Hello. I'm Dr. April Carrillo. I use the pronouns she, her, hers, and I am an assistant professor at the University of South Dakota. I don't know if I made that clear last time, but I want to this time because of the concerns over the comments last week. Although this policy would not affect our campus, there are some students, as you can see, who are very concerned about the comments that were made last week, so I want to let them know that one person and some people do not represent the whole. We are not a monolith, we are many, and there are some of us who do not align with those beliefs. I am one of those people. Last time when I was here, I was pretty relentless with the facts. I went one after the other, and I brought the ones that I brought. Fact-supporting trans bathroom policy, with studies that showed that they pose no danger to cisgender students, they help trans students, they prevent suicide, and unequal education outcomes. The reason that I brought those was that often the opposition, as what's been said tonight, is that tonight, is that the opposition says that we are using feelings instead of facts, when that's not true. I am an academic, which means I am trained in reading studies and understanding how to figure out if they're credible or not, despite if I like the outcome. I study LGBTQ issues with the criminal legal system. I specifically focus on gender identity. That is my bread and butter. So when I bring you studies and when I tell you, I've looked at them, I've looked at these studies that have been weaponized against trans youth and I can assure you, they are all one step above pseudoscience. I would be the first one to admit if they were not. But if you have any questions or concerns, I'm not that hard to find, so feel free to email me if you want to discuss further. Now, another thing I want to address are the contradictions when you use the social construction argument against gender identity. Gender identity cannot be socially constructed and rooted in biological essentialism. What I mean is that you cannot accuse trans kids of constructing their own identity, but then also say that the gender you are born as is what will dictate the rest of your life. This logic says if you are born female, you will be a woman, be in the kitchen, be a secretary or teacher work, and have children, when that's not true. Despite the fact that, are we good? Despite the fact that there have been large-scale gender equity movements that have gone so far to break down those barriers in gender roles, but yet here we are applying them to children. Sex is a biological apparatus where gender is psychological, which means that it happens in the brain. They are two different things in one person that will parallel each other. Also, if gender was not socially constructed, we will be bound to the rules by our biology, which we as humans do not experience. Every person who was assigned female at birth in this room does not have the same job, goals, likes, or would even date the same people. There is no nature that is independent of social context, especially in a species like ours that is based heavily on social interaction. I lastly want to give great thanks to all the parents, students, advocates, and community allies who have come here consistently to support the very children whose mental, physical, and emotional well-being are being debated in this room. This is necessary but hard work. There are actually two members of this very school board who have been unfairly targeted online for their support for a policy that enhances civil liberties. In a state where we center freedom, expression, and the American dream, where is that if a child cannot even go to the bathroom in peace? Thank you.
Bridgette Diamond Welch.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Diamond Welch. I wanted to speak today in support of the new gender equity policy. As a mother of a child in the Vermillion School District, I've been continually impressed by how caring and considerate the teachers and staff are. My child is neurodivergent and has many difficulties adjusting to the school schedule. The teachers and staff have continually worked with him and my family to make sure that he's respected, heard, and feels cared for and is safe. I would expect that the school, its teachers, and its staff would want the same for all students. This policy, that is what this policy represents. It ensures that all students are safe and provides them with the ability to have their bodily autonomy respected. I encourage you to continue showing the best of Vermillion and our community by passing this policy.
Emma, I'm going to apologize, I can't read your last name. I know it starts with a P.
Yeah, my handwriting sucks, sorry. Hello, my name is Emma Proudie. I am a senior at USD finishing my undergraduate degree. Many here might recognize my last name. I am from Elk Point and was in Vermillion more times than I can count. Vermillion was this fun, cool place that I got to come and play my instrument or sing and be around people that I felt were similar to me and had same interests as me. My parents, or many parents here tonight, planned to come up and talk about how unfair this bill is to the majority or to the straight cisgender children of Vermillion. While it is important to think about them and worry about their safety and their comfort, nobody is being a voice for these poor children who are uncomfortable every single day. Nobody is sticking up for the kids who don't know what it means to be themselves or who don't feel safe doing that or feel comfortable doing that. I am here to be an advocate for these children. I'm here to tell you about the uncomfort they face every single day. It's not uncomfort, it's not just uncomfort at school, it's uncomfort in their body, in their home, in their family, or even in their friend groups. They are uncomfortable every second of the day because they either don't know who they are or they don't feel comfortable expressing who they are because they know they will not be accepted. I sat and I watched the two-hour-long meeting last week. To the man who talked about the things we learn in kindergarten being the most important things you'll learn in life, this is not diminishing that, it's adding to it. How important is it to learn you can be whoever you want to be in life and you need to be accepted for that and you want to accept other people for this as well? How is that any different from what we learn anyway? Treat people the way that you want to be treated. How would every single person who got up here today and talked about how these children don't deserve a bathroom, how would they like to be treated in the same aspect? Would they want the same treatment that they are giving to a child? To the university professor that got up here and talked about how we need to be put up with, children are not people that you put up with. LGBTQ youth is not a group that you put up with. We are humans, we are siblings, we are daughters, sons, we are children. We are not a group that you put up with. This is not a matter of tolerance, this is a matter of looking out for children. I work in a place where I see the end result of people getting put up with. I get to see what they get turned into instead of community members. How would you like to see one of these children that you say you have to tolerate turn to meth or cocaine or alcohol? How would you like to see one of these children that you put up with try and commit suicide because they feel they need to be put up with? Yours closed-minded ways are the reason that the suicide rate within the LGBT is as high as it is. And if you need someone to teach you, maybe come to a spectrum meeting, maybe open your mind, but this is not, children are not something that you need to be tolerated with. We should be tolerating you and your point, not the other way around. To the man who talks about segregating children, we've been here before, society has done this before. If this is where we go, I hope you're prepared for the number of students who get bullied, beat up, and severely hurt because they just want to go to the bathroom. You also talk about the ninety percent. The ninety percent have been protected their entire lives. This is about the ten percent that have not seen protection at all. To all the people coming and making a point about having gay friends or no gay people, when I came out, this was thrown in my face. I came out and had a family member look me in the eye and tell me that they had gay friends and they wished that never, they never wished that upon their children. This is not a point. Showing acceptance and love is the point. To me, this bill is hopeful, it gives hope. To the people who are against this bill, you are the problem. Thank you for your time. I urge you to pass this bill.
Mason.
All right. So I'm going to try not to get wound up because the more I sit here, I realize that me doing what I'm doing right now could very well put me at some safety risks, so a little scary. My name is Mason Ludig. Many also know me as Beanie, as my students and classmates are here. My pronouns are he/him. I'm a graduate transfer student at the University of South Dakota. I'd like to mention now, from some of the comments, that my last, where I got my bachelor's degree was a Catholic college and I was fully accepted at that Catholic college. I'm in the pursuit of my sixth degree and the first of two masters that I will have completed by May of 2022. I'm also a thrower for our track and field team, a member of Spectrum, and also a coyote crazy alpha. This is only a small list of my accomplishments and the elements of my identity. You may be asking yourself, why is a college athlete attending a school board meeting involving a secondary education policy? The reason I'm here today is because this transgender bathroom policy is a personal matter. I am an openly transgender college athlete, female to male. Without my own confirmation, I can almost guarantee not one person in this room or those who watch this would have assumed otherwise. I'm kind, honest, trustworthy, dependable, and most importantly, hardworking. Though I cannot represent all the transgender people, I'm here to, I am here to extinguish the fear people have towards people like me. I took the time to watch the entire two-and-a-half-hour meeting held last week. Within the first twenty minutes, I felt everything from anger and frustration to sadness and defeat. I come from a small Nebraska village of three hundred and seventy-five people. My school was a combined elementary, middle school, and high school. There was an average four hundred students and my class consisted of thirty-nine people. By the time I came out the first time as a masculine presenting gay woman, I was the only openly LGBT individual in our entire school. I knew from the young age of two that I was different, but I didn't have the language to understand who I was until I reached high school, yet I continued to hide. This continued until my senior year of college where I decided enough was enough. I was lucky to have a strong support system from my friends, teammates, and family. Though I have built myself a firm foundation and support system, I have experienced many hardships being a part of the LGBT+ community. I've been bullied, harassed, threatened, and encountered many situations where my physical well-being was in harm's way. Hence, at this moment, I kind of worry about it too. More often than not, these experiences are almost exclusively tied to the use of the restroom. To the man who is concerned for their children not understanding what being transgender is, I have a four-year-old little brother, who I love dearly, who proves this issue no avoid. I have never explicitly explained to my brother that I'm transgender, only described myself as a brother and a boy. He notices that I keep my shirt on when I swim or that I play softball instead of baseball, yet he understands. On our way to pick up our other siblings, he asked me, Beanie, boys play baseball and girls play softball. I won't get into that aside of it, but yes. I said, yes, buddy, that's true. Unprompted, he goes, well, I know you play softball, but I know you're a boy. That now five-year-old little boy understands boys and girls come in all shapes and sizes. As much as he looks up to me, I look up to him. He inspires me to be the best man that I can be. For the gentleman who is concerned about unmonitored bathroom use, sir, I respectfully, respectfully, I'd like to say if I am asked for a genital check or ID check, it would come with a physical reaction not so pleasant. Why? Because even before I came out as transgender, I was followed, harassed, and threatened going into the restroom. Still to this day, I look over my shoulder before I use the restroom. If I can help it, I always go in groups. If someone enters the restroom, I will wait until they leave. I have had security guards at bars follow me into the restroom, stop and question me. I have had women yell at me as I go into the restroom. I have had security called after I've entered the restroom. I have even had a few peek into my stall, all because they are supposedly afraid of who I am. When in reality, they are perpetuating the very behavior that so many have claimed is the issue and what they are scared of. No predator, pedophile, or rapist cares about a sign on a door. I do as I, I do as it could very, I do these things very well, sorry. I do this, these things as it could very well mean life or death. Now I have an answer to your concern of kids not feeling safe or comfortable using locker rooms or restrooms, going so far as to hold it until they have reached their restroom at home. This is a daily experience for transgender people or even those who dare to present opposite to the sex that they were assigned at birth. I'm almost done, I promise. I've been doing this long before I came out as transgender. Even when I had long hair and still identified as a female, I was mistaken as a man. I constantly weighed whether I wanted to be beaten up for being seen as a man in a women's restroom or being a woman caught in a men's restroom, as both are very possible. Voting no on this policy eliminates safe access to the bathroom for all kids. Opposers of this policy say create special bathrooms or categories. I see a quick way for bullies to identify the kid that doesn't fit in. I see the kids who don't feel safe at home to be who they are become victims of physical, mental, emotional, and even sexual assault because they are outed by their peers, all because they need to use the restroom. It is a basic right. No kid should risk an accident, UTIs, embarrassment, or even harm to answer nature's call. I ask for the sake of all kids who are like myself, pass this bill to set the precedent that we too deserve a safe access to basic necessities such as the restroom. Thank you for your time.
Jacob Skelton.
Hello, a few more people than we had last few meetings, but that makes it fun, I guess. Thank you so much for your time. I'm Jacob Skelton, as you guys already know. But at our last meeting, I stressed concern regarding the safety of my children who are part of the school district. Reviewing the revised policy, I still have some of the same concerns and some questions as well, so I wanted to bring those to your attention. So on the actual policy itself, under the procedure section, does the accommodation stated also apply to those that are confident in their identity or those that don't identify as a transgendered person? So there needs to be more focus on that group and it seems like this focuses on just one select group. However, the policy does not address those who may feel unwelcome or unsafe because of the policy. So therefore, the question I had was, will the school make an accommodation so a biological female would not have to use a restroom or a locker room with a biological male? When we originally started, that was one of the issues that was brought up is some of the facilities, if somebody wanted to use their own restroom or farther away from the other ones, I was just curious if that would be presented for those that don't feel comfortable because of the policy being enacted as well. Obviously, no harassment or anything should take place at any restroom, so it's not an issue of that, it's just with the policy, you're going to have people that are going to feel uncomfortable. Another question I had, how many individual restrooms and individual locker rooms does each school plan to have? My fear is if there's a lot of students that want to use those facilities, it could create a bottleneck or issues in regards to so many people wanting to use them and being able to serve them well. A question I had under the procedure as well, can you put a measurable number to consistently asserted gender? So I know that this was previously brought up, but I couldn't remember if it has to be stated like once a year, once a month. How often could that change just for consistency? Specifically, the issue's been brought up about the gender fluid situations. That would cause a lot of concern for a policy like this. And then would those who consider themselves part of this group also be allowed to use the bathroom of their choice as far as those part of the gender fluid or would they fall under a different category as well? So under the confidentiality section, I had a question specifically, who are the staff who will be allowed to know the identity of the students that identify different than the way they look? I don't have an issue with things being confidential, I think that is important. My concern though is if there's just a few people, say like one or two people in the entire school, that's very hard to make sure things go according to what we want to have happen. So that's putting a lot of risk and responsibility on the person that has that knowledge in addition to whatever job they originally were hired for before this policy was in place. The question I had in regards to overnight stays, so I'd just like to clarify if I understand correctly, per this policy, those voting for the policy are in approval that they are allowing a biological male and a biological female to share a bed at a school function? I just want to make sure that that was, if I understand that correctly. As a parent, I have a lot of issues with this and can't believe that that's even being discussed. As a parent, I love my kids, I don't want to put them in situations that would be unneeded risk for them. And then in those situations, I don't know how it works right now, if there is an adult in the picture as well in regards to those rooms or if it's just the four students or how that looks, that would be a way to kind of help make sure things don't happen that shouldn't happen. So prior to this proposed policy, we did have a practice that I felt was working very well, and not perfect, and we've made some adjustments based on some of the analysis that we've done, so I appreciate the work that you guys have done. But having a policy versus a practice, does that now increase the liability if something does go the way that we don't want it to go? So I think it's wise to look at the Loudon County as a case study. Nobody wants that, you guys don't want that, I don't want that, nobody wants that, but just considering how that policy played out, I know the policy came after the incident, but that type of a policy creates this opportunity for somebody that wants to abuse it and we don't want that. So I hope and pray that this is not Vermillion's future. This policy... But having a policy versus a practice, does that now increase the liability if something does go the way that we don't want it to go? So I think it's wise to look at Loudoun County as a case study. Nobody wants that. You guys don't want that. I don't want that. Nobody wants that. But just considering how that policy played out, I know the policy came after the incident, but that type of a policy creates this opportunity for somebody that wants to abuse it, and we don't want that. So I hope and pray that this is not Vermillion's future. This policy opens that door, and so I ask that you please reject it. Thank you again for your time and the long hours and for everything. Thanks.
Brandon Steenhold.
Hello, my name is Brandon Steenhold. This will be my second time speaking, which is sad I have to speak again. It will also be my last. I'm talking to you all, and I strongly ask on behalf of so many parents who won't speak on this for various reasons, which some I don't understand when it involves their kids being manipulated and misled. But I will be the majority's voice. I'm glad that I can do this to glorify God and Him only, because in the end, He is all that matters, not your feelings or emotions. Feelings and emotions lie, so I'd like to start with this. There are two genders, male and female. Transgender is a lie to society to deceive. It's a myth. It's not real. The facts are there. You can't change your gender, and if you think you can, your parents are failing to raise you. First, when I spoke, I rambled off the top of my head and realized how one-sided this is. So where's the confusion? Well, it comes from misleading parents who don't care about anyone but themselves and their feelings and their emotions, which come from a woke leftist liberal agenda, which is huge in our college, which is where most of you work, go to school, or have a lot to do with. As you talk about changing stalls and bathrooms, you don't think that our taxpayer dollars have to pay for it, which we hardworking parents don't want that at all. Don't ruin our kids because you're brainwashing yours. To state, kids should get to choose their gender as garbage at that age and any other. There is a reason we have age limits for voting, drinking, and serving in the military. It's because at that age, they have developed maturity. At the ages you're saying kids can change their genders when they're not even close to being mature. Plus, it's impossible. You are the gender, male or female, which I've heard so much tonight in this room. That's why I'm so shocked we're even talking about this. That it's, can change their genders when they are not even close to being mature. Plus, it's impossible, okay? And so your brain doesn't tell you one day that you can be a girl or a boy. That's a load of crap and was brought up last week and this week. It is not a fact. It is misleading. It's a lie, a lie that has continued to get stretched. We do everything we can to lead our kids on godly standards, and people tear that down. Parents try to take God out of the schools but want to put so-called trans and LGBTQ into schools and push a woke agenda on kids, innocent kids. You want to shove down their throats homosexuality and think that is okay or it is okay to change genders. Why? Do I stand here and be prideful and shove down your throat that I'm straight and know my gender? So why do you, and many other business owners and so-called parents say, and try to promote trans and homosexuality down our throats? It needs to stop. Promoting sin and misleading children is wrong. It's not parenting. You are not parents. You are failing your children and their people's, and other people's children who might look up to you and trust you. Only God and God alone created it all in His image. You can't change that. You are not God, and you're believing the enemy Satan's lies. And He is blinding you and deceiving you with this hate and separation. Ask yourself as an adult, are you glorifying God? I'm sorry, but I'm going to be truthful about this. Yes, truth hurts, but what you need to hear is this, and it needs to make you wake up, make you uncomfortable, because being comfortable is dangerous and leads to destruction. I'm so glad I'm a man with a set and a backbone, to call it what it is, and it's evil, sick, garbage, and so wrong. So last, I leave it at this. Instead of funds for this, how about we start funding for teachers who know health and can teach correctly? If you have a penis and balls, you're a man. And if you have a vagina and boobs, you're a female. That's that. No changing it and no questioning it. So back to you, are you going to choose off of lying feelings and be selfish? Or are you going to stand against evil and do what's best for our kids? Say no to this. Save our children and protect them, like so many parents are trusting you to do. Thank you.
So we have been taking comment for about an hour and forty minutes now. I am going to call for a seven-minute recess, at which time we will return for thirty more minutes, and that will be the end of public comment. So we will stand in recess until nine PM, at which point we'll have thirty more minutes.
Thank you for your attention. I will call us back into session. And again, we will put a hard stop to public comment at 9:30 so that the board has an ample time to discuss and take into this in. The next speaker on the list is Casey Tubbs. It is Casey, isn't it? I was trying to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Casey Tubbs and I'm a junior here at USD. I'm here to speak to the board as well as to everyone else in this room. I'm from Southern California and I came to Vermillion hoping that as then closeted member of the LGBTQIA+ community, I would be accepted for who I am, especially since South Dakota isn't known for being the most accepting state in the nation. I am now out and a proud member of the LGBTQIA+ community and I found a second home here in Vermillion. But I was disgusted when I found out of the hateful reactions to the current proposal and to see that trans students are being openly discriminated against by many members of their Vermillion community. I went to public school a lot more recently than the majority of the people in this room, so I thought it was important to bring light to this policy from a student's perspective. Schools should be a safe place for children regardless of their identity. I cannot believe that there are adults in this room who want to prohibit children from being who they are. I ask the board and everyone in this room to remember that trans rights are humans' rights and something as simple as using the bathroom of the gender you identify as should not even be a question. Trans kids are often bullied and shamed for their identity and voting against this policy will only reinforce the hatred and exclusion that some of them are shown every single day. Let's show our support for these kids. Please stop this hatred and misinformation and start treating trans children and trans young adults as the students and human beings that they are. If this policy does not pass, then Vermillion is not the accepting and loving town that I thought it was. I support this policy and I urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Morgan Lorenzen.
My name is Morgan Lorenzen and I'm a junior here at the University of South Dakota. I'm also an elementary and special education major. Let me tell you, I am very passionate about teaching and what I'm going to do. Actually, if you guys didn't know, my student teaching application is due on December 1st, which I'm super excited for. Earlier this year, my plan was to choose Vermillion as the district I would soon teach in. However, now I couldn't be more opposed. As a future educator, I will never allow myself to teach, student teach, or intern in a school district that does not advocate for inclusivity and diversity. I will not create my classroom in a school district that does not allow students to identify as they are. That is not inclusive and I'd be absolutely ashamed to be in a school district like this. If this school district votes against this policy, then they are aiding in a school climate that does not appreciate diversity and inclusivity. I speak for myself and other future educators on this matter. USD has a huge education program. The Vermillion School District will become low on student teachers and educators if this policy passes because no one wants to work in a school that throws the minority students to the side for their own benefit. If Dr. Monica Iverson, who is one of my sped professors, has taught me anything in her classes about life and teaching and everything in general, it is that I can't advocate for my students if I can't advocate for myself and I can't advocate for myself if I can't advocate for my students. This is me standing right here advocating for my future school district, my future classroom, and my future students. Thank you.
Gerald Jacobs.
I just want to make a few points based upon talking with people in the community and based on a letter that was sent out widely yesterday protesting this proposed policy. One of the things the letter suggested was that there can be no such thing as transgender people because God created people, male and female. And I would... There's a number of snarky comments I can make about that, but I'm not going to. But I wonder how those same people who believe that deal them with hermaphrodites who are born with the sexual organs of both genders. And that's a simple fact. They exist. So did God make a mistake? Or did somebody else create them? I would suggest that they have to think about that a little bit. The other thing that I heard presented quite a bit was fear that people are going to fake being transgender in order to be able to go to different bathrooms and different showers. And I think that represents a total misunderstanding of the life of transgender people. I was a clinical psychologist for 38 years and I dealt with a lot of people who were transgender and similar kinds of issues, but it is not an easy life. And the research clearly indicates that it is a very, very difficult life for transgender people in general. The latest research that I've seen is from the American Academy of Pediatrics, a pretty respectable medical organization, who studied thousands of transgender youths. And the more than half of the males reported that they had attempted suicide. That's a lot. About 30% of the females had attempted suicide. And that's a staggering number. And so the day-to-day life of transgender people tends to be very difficult. Maybe not for every one of them, but for a lot of them. And I would suggest to you that I've also seen transgender children who were in very loving and accepting families who also attempted suicide. And so it's not just the issue of whether or not the parents are accepting. The other point that I would make is indeed, this will not suddenly make all the stress go away from kids who are transgender or not. And I hope that you will also institute policies that address education of children about these issues and make sure that you're instituting policies preventing bullying. Because bullying does go on, it will go on, and this is not going to end that magically. Just in a comment I heard at the break, I thought I would mention too. I had to travel a great deal in my work and I worked in 46 countries. And in many of those countries, the restrooms are unisex. Men and women go to the bathroom, the same place, the same room, using the same facilities. And they even have attendants that are male and female that don't stick with the same gender restrooms. And that's been going on for a very long time without particular problems. So it's not a new idea. And I would urge you to pass this and respect the civil rights of our children.
Kelly Stone.
Thank you. As a mother of two VHS graduates who now can be their authentic selves, I encourage you to vote yes for the transgendered bathrooms. Both of my children never felt safe to identify differently in our school district, K through 12. As their mother and a dedicated special education teacher in our district, this was a difficult road for me to navigate. One of my children was suicidal with the amount of stress, depression, and anxiety that identifying differently has caused them. It is not an easy path in our society, especially in a small town in South Dakota. If we can help make all our students feel safe being their authentic selves, imagine the difference it would make in their lives, their education, and their future careers. When allowing students to use a bathroom that they identify with, a powerful message would be sent to them from our district. One of my goals has always been to make a difference in the lives of my students. One of acceptance and understanding regardless of your race, color, creed, religion, natural origin, gender, disability, ancestry, sexual orientation, gender identity, or age. Thank you.
Davida Russell.
Hello, my name is Davida. My pronouns are she/her. And I am going to be brief today. That's a thing. All right, so I have a child in our district and the gender equity and access policy has my full support. Our children have suffered long enough under the current discriminatory practices, so it's time to vote yes and give all students of Vermillion the basic level of human rights and decency and respect they deserve.
Cindy Game.
Hi, my name is Cindy Game. I raised four children in this district and I have two grandchildren in the district. And I'm keeping this simple. I've been watching the entirety of the school board meetings online related to this issue, at least seven hours worth. The basic policy that is being adopted is one that focuses on protection of all students. The board has heard the public's opposition with mostly its concern for safety and has listened and acted in a manner that can only be described exemplary. I've been pleased as they obviously care about our children with this issue of safety and have made many changes to the original document to address those concerns. The current situation does not necessarily respect privacy, whether transgender or not, and changes will be made with the passing of this policy. That has been discussed thoroughly, as far as I can tell. The other point I'd like to make is that transgender students tend to be very sensitive about this life they've entered. They are no more deviant than any other individual in society. They simply want their privacy, as all of us do. This policy is giving everyone a better situation. If your problem is the existence of transgender individuals, then that is a whole other topic. And the school board is not here to address that specific issue. The board has listened to the people and is adequately addressing the safety concerns that so many have had. I stand by the policy with its recent changes. Thank you.
Isabel, and I apologize, I can't make out the last name.
Hello, my name is Isabel Young, pronoun she-be. I want to say that I am... I graduated from Vermillion in 2019, so we love the Tanagers. And I'm also a current USD student, so also go Yotes. And as someone who has come from this community, I understand the lengths that the school board and the school district has gone to to help support all of our families. And I really appreciate all of the work you guys have put in. And I want to stand here in support of this bill as another step forward to continuing to help support our families and our students, especially those students that don't feel like they have a space where they can be safe, or where they feel like they're belonged, or where they feel like their education matters. I also would like to address a few of the claims made by parents. So some people claim that children aren't... Like, they're vulnerable and they can't understand all these information. But I've found that children are always the most accepting, which we've heard from other people here, so I don't need to go super in-depth in it. And I also want to commend all the people who spoke to. But I think what causes that confusion is when we force children to look at things through such a black and white way. But clearly life has shown that it is more dynamic than that. I also want to talk about the fact that when it comes to overnight stays, that's another thing I wanted to talk about. I think we're ignoring the fact that if a trans person is in a room filled with other cisgender people, they're going to interact with them just as the other cisgender people do, you know? Because they're students too. And if you assume that just because a penis and a vagina or whatever are getting into a bed together, that sexual relations are going to happen, that's on you, that's not on trans people, that's not on LGBT people. We are simply just existing and want to be a part of things just like everyone else. And it's also coming from an incredibly heterosexual standpoint, considering the fact that it doesn't even come to your... I realize that this is going to sound bad, but it doesn't even come to your mind that if two women or two men are in a bed, that something sexually is going to happen. But also consider, you're on a school trip, there are two other people in that room, they are not going to let you have sex in that room. I also know that there have been a lot of concerns about sports. And I don't have all of the facts on me, but a lot of students that do participate in sports do things like puberty blockers and hormones that make it so playing with their assigned gender isn't always fair either. And I'm not here to come up with like solutions for that, like, love y'all. But at the end of the day, what it really comes to is that people are coming here from their own bias that comes from... I'm not trying to make claims about religion either. I appreciate all of your guys' religions and I appreciate the beauty that comes from religions, but I think we also have to respect the separation of church and state as well and that these bills should not be motivated by religious bias and persecution. Thank you.
Becky Sanderson.
Hi, my name is Becky Sanderson. I have three kids. My oldest is a preschooler. I honestly wasn't even sure that I wanted to come. When I got home, my husband's like, "Do you want to go to the school board meeting tonight?" And I didn't actually know that I did. He's much better at talking than I am and I know that he has spoken before and it's much easier for me to just let him do that. But as I was holding my four-month-old and looking at her, I realized that if these were my kids and my kids needed somebody to stand up there, that I would hope that someone would be up here for them too. So I'm here. I'm in full support of this policy and I hope that you vote yes.
So we have 11 minutes of public comment. If there is anyone who would choose to speak, please approach the podium, state your name. Actually, if you are willing, form a line and we'll get as many of you as we can.
Hi, my name is Zadia Abbott. I was raised here. I went to elementary school here. I went to middle school here. And I graduated with the class of 2020 from Vermillion High School. And I can say that I know what it's like to have the Vermillion School District discriminate against you in a way that does not benefit your education. I know what it's like to stand in a room with students and teachers and have those same teachers hear people take my name, which is previously stated, is Zadia, and have them hear them say, have students say that my name is Slavia, or that, and have the teachers in that room accept that as something that could happen because it does not change their educational policies, doesn't change their lessons plans. How I feel doesn't change your lesson plan. But the fact that I should... That people have to stand up here and ask the community to respect the safety and the well-being of their students so that they can grow and be educated in a way that makes it so they are set up for better futures is ridiculous. It is your job to make sure that not only the students in those buildings are safe, but that they feel like they are listened to. They feel like they have every single resource to set themselves up for success. They do not need to explain their identity to you. And they just need to pee. So let them pee. Sorry, I have a cold, so if you can't hear me, you know.
Make sure to state your name.
I'm Annabattasini. I graduated last year from Vermillion High School. I went from kindergarten all the way up to senior year, all through Vermillion School District. And to be honest, I don't think anyone would care if a trans student walked into a bathroom to pee. As someone else stated, nobody looks around and is like, hmm, oh, I see genitalia. No. You're in a bathroom. You're there to pee and get to class. There's five-minute breaks. You don't have time for that. Also, to say that there's only two sexes, as someone already previously mentioned, denies intersex, which is just a biological fact, along with the fact that gender has been proven to also be scientifically involved. Scientific American wrote an article titled "Stop Using Phony Science to Justify Transphobia," which pretty much sums it up. So by the time we're in high school and middle school, we also all know what people look like when they're nude, pretty much. We know that people don't have the same genitals. And that's just normal. So if we're in the locker room, nobody's going to freak out if all of a sudden they see something. Also, we aren't looking at each other in the locker rooms, nor would we share rooms on class trips. I don't know where that idea came from, but we're mostly just chilling there. I don't know. The loss of innocence is another thing I was kind of talking about with the, we already know about human anatomy. It's not a shock or anything. A big point I want to make is that a lot of people have come up here and mentioned religious things. And you're entitled to your religion, but it has no place in any school board, as there is separation between church and state unless you're at a private school. So there is one that mentioned basically that transgender homosexuals. But we are currently not having issues with homosexuals already in there. I went to school there for ages. I was in the theater department. There are a lot of homosexuals there. And we made it to state several times, spent hotel rooms with them, no problem. As for assaults, maybe we should teach our children not to assault others more than focus on those who are being assaulted. Don't punish trans students for what cis students do and take advantage of... As a sexual assault survivor, I do not fear trans students in the bathroom. I fear people who see trans students as rapists, because that is not true. And it is just denying the facts. If you can show me some evidence that says that the majority of them are going and raping people in the bathroom, be my guest, but I have yet to find anything to prove that. Also, I just want to finish off by saying, if all human lives have value, which most of us believe, then denying trans students fair treatment, which we know reduces their suicide rates, is in fact openly being against valuing human life. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Lapp. And when I think Mr. Johnson were dealing with the sports issue, I have a daughter that ran long distance from 3,000 meters all the way to a half marathon and the majority of time ran with the guys because in the interest of time, you ran them together. She never would have won. And she was a five-time All-American in college. So there is a difference whether you have gender blockers or not. So when it comes to sports, there is a difference that needs to be dealt with. And when it came to the first, very first meeting, it was all about being free to pee. And why should that matter where you pee? And now it's overnight accommodations and it's sports and it's not letting the parents know what the child is deciding in school. Is that really the route you want to take? Take the responsibility of the parents away from their children? I'm a parent of three, have the three cutest grandchildren in the world, hands down. And I would ask you, do you want to take that responsibility away from me as a parent, you never stopped being a parent, and from my son and his wife, from their children? That is their job, not yours to keep it from them, and their job to help their child deal with that. And hormones rage, no matter what, from junior high on. I remember junior high, it's been a while, but I remember it. I remember high school and putting mixed sexes in a room, whether they're transgender or not, it doesn't matter. That's opening a Pandora's box. And then look at, I've heard about all that you want transgender to prevent depression and suicide. How many people have transgender, still commit suicide, want a transgender back because that's not the answer to their problem? They transgender because they thought it would be the issue. They weren't given counseling ahead of time. They weren't given all the options. They weren't told, you're going to have healthy body parts removed, you're going to be given chemicals, and you're going to be sterile. And then when they get transgendered, they want to go back. Has anyone done a study on that and looked at the facts of that? You want to make sure these young people are given all the facts, given all the opportunities. Everyone is loved, everyone is respected, and that includes the parents, who are ultimately responsible for the education and the welfare of their children, not you. Thank you.
Jennifer Phelan. I want to thank the board for your work putting this policy together. I am in support of the policy's passage. And I strongly feel that this policy shows students and families that the Vermillion School District stands and is ready to do the work in supporting all of our students. It stands behind the notice of nondiscrimination that's in the policy manual. A no vote tells all students that their self-determination in defining their identity is not supported by the district. There are transgender students in the district. There are transgender students in the district that parents, administrators, and board members don't know yet. There are transgender and non-binary students in the district who have not told anyone yet. There are transgender and non-binary students who don't even know who they are yet. And by passing this policy, it's a way to stand with these And by passing this policy, it's a way to stand with these students. It indicates, it indicates that the district they're in not only says it's inclusive, that there's substance behind that assertion. And if students come out or they need support, the school is a safe place to do it. The National Education Association, the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the National Association of Secondary School Principals, the American School Counselor Association, the National Association of School Psychologists, all support the policy we're talking about. Actually, the policy that is written is very similar to the one that is from the NEA, from what I've read, from reading it and looking at our policy. Just as we turn to resources for best practices on curriculum and other aspects of the district, this topic should be like no other. We go to the resources, we go to best practices. This policy supports all Vermillion School Districts, present and future, in their self-determination and knowing who they are and being safe being themselves while they're in school. Thank you so much for your efforts on this policy.
Hi, I'm Joe Fidel Mopery. I'm in support of this policy because speaking as someone who came out of the closet in 2007, who was, to my classmates, who was outed by my high school principal, to my mother, which resulted in me being kicked out of my house, moving into the house of the person who sexually assaulted me, having to spend the last two years of high school in the house. By you guys voting no on a policy like this, it's telling LGBT youth that you don't care about them, that the school system that should be there to support them, should be there to make sure that they can grow up in a sheltered life, won't have that. So I would urge you to vote yes on this because you don't know what your students' home lives might be like. Whereas when I told my high school principal that if she outed me, that what happened would happen. And I had to deal with my mom calling my lifestyle disgusting. So please vote yes because your students' lives matters and you don't know what's going on at their homes.
So I, before you begin, I see four people in line. Can I ask you to be extremely brief so that we can get through those four? The board can then enter discussion.
Sir. Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Aaron Vlasman. I'm a senior at the University of South Dakota, a registered voter here in Clay County, and I am strongly in favor of the policy at discussion. I won't do any of the throat clearing about caring for all students in the district because I believe that that should be inherent to everyone at this meeting. I don't need to prove that to you all. While I am originally from Watertown, my family has a deep history here. My father was raised here. My uncle raised three tanagers here. And my father and his brother both went to Jolly Elementary School. When we discuss the gender equity policy and the rights of transgender students writ large, it's important we discuss how we got these bathroom rules in the first place and what efforts this board is trying to solve. First, Terry Cogan, a law professor at the University of Utah, notes that initial gender segregation came from a wave of public policy designed to provide women with a safe space which included things like separate spaces in libraries, separate train cars, and separate bathrooms. Building codes that were largely a product of this time adopted the same segregation in bathroom policies are the only societal holdover of this issue. This was not founded in a societal effort to ensure equality. It was quite literally thrown into building codes and we have defaulted on that chance decision ever since. It is in no way a radical idea for us to depart from those ideas. But second, and most importantly, safety in the status quo is compromised every single day we don't move forward on this legislation. Trans students are not the people committing violence, they are the target of violence, and research backs this up. A study done in 2017 by the Williams Institute found that 70% of trans people reported experiencing denial of access, verbal harassment, and even physical assault only in an attempt to use the restroom. Protecting the legal rights of transgender people in the school district is the first of many steps toward ending this cycle of violence. And if you care about the children in our community, then you need to care about transgender kids. Concerns around this bill have largely revolved around the safety and innocence of cisgender students in the district. Irregardless of the fact that these are children we're talking about, if there is a real fear that our public schools will be infiltrated with predators, then it's time we become tougher on sex education standards and school security. If you value the innocence of children, then you should vote to preserve the innocence of trans students as well. Finally, I care deeply about this community. The love Vermillion has shown myself and all of its permanent and semi-permanent residents each year is nothing short of admirable and inspiring. As the school board, it is your job to pass that same love on to the students in this school district. It may not seem like a lot to each of you, but approving this policy is an act of love and kindness. Your vote is an opportunity to tell students that they are loved, that they are cared for, and that they are visible, something each one of you chose to pursue when you ran for the, when you ran for election for the school board. I ask you to remember that goal and please vote yes in favor of this bill.
I have never spoken at one of these things before, so bear with me. To keep it quick, my name is Ryan Halligan. I am a student here at USD. And there is one specific thing I am here to talk about. I'm in support of this policy fully. I spent 13 years of my life wrestling boys. I was born a girl. I identify as a female now. I thrived. I gained leadership skills. I gained respect. I gained, you know, physical, you know, I got stronger, I got faster. There was never a point in my life where being born a girl in a male sport was bad for me, except for when the parents were bad for me. All I ask is that, especially when considering these sports things and this policy as a whole, you look at your students as individuals and let them participate and behave and identify with what makes them happy. And I guarantee you, there'll be a lot of positive change.
Hey, everybody, Sarah Lampert. Thanks for extending the time so we can close up the comments. I'm a resident of Vermillion, History and Gender Studies faculty at USD, and committed to fostering an inclusive and supportive educational culture here in Vermillion. I'm speaking as a private citizen, but my perspective is shaped by my professional expertise and my experience. I want to thank you for drafting this policy. As I have shared in other contexts, I believe strongly that Vermillion School District needs to follow best practices nationwide and regionally by adopting an affirmative and inclusive policy. The safety and inclusion of all of our students, particularly our most vulnerable students, should be our priority. In my 10 years as a professor at USD and elsewhere, trans students who have taken my classes and shared their experiences with me testify to the importance of an affirming, inclusive educational environment. As a historian, I am well-aware and well-versed in the long history of gender diversity and the diversity of societies, right? What kind of society do we want to be? One that embraces and supports transgender folks or one that tries to exclude and marginalize them? Many of the fears voiced by opponents of such a policy are not based in reality, but based on fear and ignorance or isolated cases that do not meet the very parameters of our policy. So much opposition to inclusive transgender policies are based on stigmatized stereotype rather than sound research and the experiences of trans students. The actual evidence is clear that inclusive policies make our schools safer for trans students and do not endanger non-trans or cis students. There is no transgender issue here. Transgender children are not the problem. We have an inclusivity issue. Unfortunately, we are in a position to support and pass an inclusive policy, and I thank you for doing so.
So, thank you for the time. My name is Megan Jarco. So as Catherine Berklin already said, I hope that you all, and I'm sure that you have done your research and based on evidence and you've made your decision on it, I would just like to officially state my position on this. So as a parent of two children in the district, I hope that my children will always feel safe and like they belong when they're at school. Please vote yes on this bill.
Thank you. I will now open the Florida Board discussion on the policy as its current draft form.
I think there are a couple of questions that have been raised throughout the, throughout the comments today and at previous meetings that might be, might be worth addressing. One is that there is absolutely still the ability for any student that wants additional privacy or does not feel comfortable in the gendered bathroom options to have the individual bathroom and to have access to that. There have been concerns about, you know, the inconvenience of that to those students. That's the same inconvenience that we're currently asking our trans students to endure. But this is one that's not based on identity, but based on their choice about where it is that they would feel most comfortable. There's also been some questions about how we think about gender fluid and non-binary students, which are a distinct difference within, within this subset of how we think about transgender students and gender identity. In a world that is binary, it is a reality that our non-binary and our gender-fluid students have to out themselves to really exist in the world as their true selves. They don't really have the option of passing with the rest of their friends and protecting that privacy. Because if you say you're non-binary, that, you know, in order to exist as a non-binary student in a very binary world, that's a very different thing than having a transgender girl that is known to all of her classmates as a girl or a transgender boy who is known to all of his classmates as a boy. This policy is primarily designed with those latter students in mind. In those conversations with school officials, those non-binary students, they're going to most likely be comfortable in either the bathroom that aligns with the gender assigned at birth or in one of those separate facilities. That's a different conversation than sort of thinking of, it's, we're not creating an opportunity for people to make up their minds every day and go back and forth and switch back and forth. The policy clearly states this needs to be a consistently, insistently asserted gender. And so I trust our administrators, I trust our principals to have those conversations with families and develop options with those families that make the most sense for where that child is and for what's going to be the safest for them in that situation. I also have a, I have kids in our district. I have a daughter in high school who's also an athlete. I care very much about her safety. I wouldn't be in support of a policy that I felt like would threaten her safety. There have been lots of people who've asked about what you should tell your children in regards to these changes. And I would say that we should tell them the same thing that we've always said. When you go to the bathroom, you go to the bathroom. When you're done, you wash your hands and then you get out of the bathroom. You don't look over the stall or under the stall because that's an invasion of somebody else's privacy. Nobody should be looking over the stall or under the stall at you because that's an invasion of your privacy. And if someone does, you should tell somebody. And that pretty much covers what we need to cover. And I don't know that that, that doesn't change because of this policy changing. I appreciate so much all of the thoughtful comments by both supporters and opponents of this policy. I think that your input has made this policy better from the beginning. And I think that, you know, we're going to have facility changes that are going to make a lot of students feel safer. But I hope that you will continue to ask questions and that we will continue to do our best to try to answer those questions because I think those questions are legitimate. And I hope that over the last several meetings that we've had about this, we've done our part to address those as they've come up.
Other comments? Board members, questions?
The folks have reached out to me and their biggest concerns are, one, not necessarily restrooms and where people go to the bathroom, but those that have talked about the parent confidentiality or the parents not knowing. And I get it, some households won't, so I don't have an answer, but I wanted to bring it up, maybe discuss that. And also, a lot of people reached out, have a lot of concerns, issues with that overnight accommodation and have we really thought it through? See if other board members want to comment.
I think it's possible, if it's possible, that maybe scratching and having more discussion on the overnight accommodations, potentially when we do talk about the locker rooms, give some more feedback on the overnight accommodations. As well as the procedure, I still think if there's a way we can add in that communication among, I think it was one of our first drafts that we had regarding including the family is being key. I think that would be just another word that might help people feel more comfortable. Perhaps communication among the students, school, and family is key. I think, wasn't that one of our first drafts, Carol?
We included that it was key. We didn't include that it was required.
Right, but we took out family before.
I guess, I guess, I see, I would guess that most situations are going to include the parent. I anticipate that most of the conversations that would happen between a counselor or an administrator and a student about one of the situations that we're addressing here is also going to include the parent. But there may be a situation like has been described where there is not support for the student. And in that case, a parent would not be required. I feel that that is an important part of our policy and it's my understanding that that is the legal advice as well of keeping in our policy.
Question, is that true legally? Is that what we, you know, that where we gave the example? And I get both sides, so it's restrooms. But is the question that if a student identifies with a different group and we don't tell the parent and they came to you, Damon, or others, we said, no, we would not tell the parent? Because that's what a lot of concern is on that parent confidentiality or parent right, where we make them sign to go on field trips, but not this.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Since last meeting, we did a little more checking with this and we received a lot of feedback, of course, from our community. So it gave us an opportunity to look at some of the requirements with FERPA and what parents are entitled to, what's an educational record. Brent may have, have some more to add to this, but opinions differ on this situation depending on who you talk to. I spoke to two attorneys this week who said absolutely it is allowable to share with parents. They are not, you're not obligated to share information that is deemed at school, but you have the opportunity to. You would be in no violation to do so. So that is really one of the things that we heard loud and clear at last week's meeting was the concern of confidentiality from parents. And I think part of the draft policy may have been misunderstood when we talked about confidentiality. The confidentiality of the student's status is what is most at stake here. We want to make sure the kids that are involved are not outed by staff members or other students in the building communicating those without those students' wishes. It wasn't an intent to keep anything from parents. So parents were never meant to be out of the loop with that discussion. So I think that the board would have the latitude to ask us to, or make it a practice that if we're asked as part of our policy or our practice with this, that we would in fact work with parents on this issue. Now, we do that with different issues this day, just everyday business in school. If it's a safety risk for a student, if it's some of the examples we heard in our, in our testimony today, then we would have to weigh that conversation and decide if we would be willing to talk to a family about an issue that might bring a student at risk. But like Carol mentioned, all of the situations that we've faced in the last four or five years on this topic, the families have been highly engaged and always been involved. So it would be a very rare situation that a student might come to us in confidence and ask us not to tell a parent, at which time we would have to weigh that as a district and say, based on the student's fear for being ousted at home or physical violence or something like that, we'd have to consider that. But as a practice, it would be something that we could and should inform parents of.
I believe Damon summed that up quite well. However, you are under no obligation to inform the parents of those conversations unless they are memorialized in an educational record. For instance, child requests a name change in Infinite Campus. Parent calls up and says, hey, I'd like to know about my child. You're absolutely required to disclose that information. However, as Damon outlined there, just having a conversation with Damon or any other administrators or staff, you know, I'd like to keep this between us because I'm worried if I go home, I might get abused or any other safety concerns. So I think it'd be a significant disservice if you have a bright line either way, bright line of we're not going to tell parents about the child's status or we absolutely are going to inform parents of the child's status. So as a practice, I would recommend just taking it on a case-by-case basis. So as a practice, I would recommend just taking it on a case-by-case basis to properly address each situation.
I'd agree that it's important that, it's important that we have the discretion, that the administrators have the discretion to be able to deal with the variety of risks that might be entailed there that are hard for us to foresee for every possible student. And so, I think we have the expectation that in the vast majority of cases, parents are going to be advocates for their kids and they're going to be a part of that conversation. And that's certainly been the instance in all of the cases that we know about. But having the ability in a situation in which that child might be put at harm to not share that information, I think is consistent with how we think about the safety and the resources we offer our students on a whole variety of other fronts when it comes to the things that we might know about them at school that their parents might not know. In terms of the overnight stays, I feel like we did a good job in our last meeting of talking about how we can accommodate parent preferences for their students to avoid the situation if that's really important to them. I think that our policy that allows students to identify who they want to room with, these are the same kids that they've had sleepovers with at their houses, they're the same kids that they've done other things with, that that gives the flexibility for students, for parents who are really concerned about this issue to navigate that in a way that makes sense. And it gives the trans students an ability to navigate that in a way that makes them feel safe and comfortable too. So I don't see a reason to wait on that. I think that the reason we're waiting on the locker rooms and the showers is a very specific revision to facilities. And so, it's not because we haven't had adequate time to consider that, it's that we're waiting on construction changes. And so, I wouldn't want to lump the overnight stays in with that because that's not something that we're waiting on facility changes to change. It's something I think we can move forward with at this time.
So, I'm going to comment on both of these. I, and I mentioned last time that I had some reluctance about parental rights. I certainly understand and know that there are instances where it is in the student's best interest to keep that from the parent. However, I think that creates a very dangerous circumstance for the student. And I do think we could create a policy where, I mean, we, I believe, I don't, that when the parent is supportive of this identity, it will be the best possible scenario when both the parent and the district are supportive. If the parent is not supportive, then I do have some concern that if we are, we could be putting that student in more danger. Because I think it becomes harder and harder to demonstrate that consistent, insistent, persistent identity if they are having to change back and forth. I don't know exactly what the solution is. And I think if there's a case where we suspect or fear abuse, then we should be involving other professionals to make that. And so, I guess I would like to see this absolutely go through with parental consent. We already know South Dakota High School Activities Association participation procedure form that you have to fill out, which South Dakota High School Activities already allows transgender students to participate in the sport that confirms their identity. But it does require a parental signature to do that. And so, in that instance, we would have to comply with that part, we would have to allow it. So I guess I would like to see us discuss that and maybe come up with some way to find a way to create that exception so that it is truly an exception in that rare instance where the student is in danger. The overnight accommodation, my concern there is really with our, I think, appropriate level of trying to ensure confidentiality. And I have pondered, how do we create this environment where we don't run the risk of outing a student who doesn't want to be outed? And that's even true if they have a room by themselves. It starts to raise those questions. So this is one where I ultimately really hope we get there. I am just trying to figure out the procedure to get there. So it's really those two issues for me. I think the first one is easily solvable. The second one, I'm going to continue to hear discussion despite the comments, you know, about our minds being made up. And I think they're always leaning one way or another, but it's when you hear the discussion of how can we do it that it really ultimately pushes me in one way or the other.
I think, I'll just piggyback to what Shane had talked about earlier. She hit it right on the head. We had brought up concerns last meeting about students underneath the broad umbrella of transgender. And it could be binary, it could be fluid, and I'm sure there's a lot of other pieces to that puzzle. But I think our potential policy at this point does address that. It asks that you have to persistently, consistently, and insistently identify the gender that you identify with. So in that terms, a student who might be in the position of binary or fluid that is having some of these other concerns would not be eligible for this policy. They haven't, they haven't met the first tenet of the policy, which is that you have to have an affirmed identity. At this point, in my view, the board would, we would, we would treat that as, when we're looking at accepting this student's request for the restroom change, or this family's request, that they wouldn't have the first tenet down, which is the fact that they aren't consistent. If I understand some of those things correctly, a binary or a fluid student could be trying to make these decisions different ways at different times. So I think that we need to realize that this particular policy deals specifically with the persistent, insistent, and consistent identity that the students identify with and probably have the support of the families 99% of the time. That's been our experience. And if the policy works as intended, nobody else in the district knows that it's even happened. And that's not meant to be under the table or confidential. It's just like a lot of other business that happens in schools, which if we have a student who has AIDS or has some other situation in their life, the rest of the students and the staff aren't necessarily entitled to know those things. For the health and well-being of the student, we can make these things happen and make them successful for all students. So I'm, I am confident that the policy as it's written can, identifies or takes care of the issue of the questions raised at last month, or last week's meeting with gender-fluid students or students that might be binary. So I think that we've addressed that in the policy. My concern would be, continue with what we've talked about with overnight accommodations. Over the last week, we've taken numerous questions on how would that look? And I do agree that at this point, I prefer we have more time to deal with that. I don't know what the end result could be. But right now, again, we don't have any students in that particular situation that we need to make that decision tonight because we don't have any need for those accommodations coming up in the near future. That's not to say that we don't need to address the issue, but we need to work on finding some solutions that would make people comfortable. Does that include more private rooms? Does it allow kids to pick their roommates? What happens if kids want to pick their roommate but parents don't agree with the choices of the child? You know, those are all things that we need to really grapple with before we pass that part of the policy. So that's my thoughts on those two issues.
I'd like to follow up quickly on your comment, Doug. I would just like to advise that I have serious reservations about the district outing individuals with no legal obligation to do so. And so, I realize you'd like to create a policy and then create an exception. I think it would be better addressed as a practice as opposed to an explicit policy.
Can I ask a question of the policy committee? My understanding, and there have been a lot of parent questions about this too, about the expansion of this policy and how it went from originally being about bathrooms to being a more broad policy. And the way in which that happened was twofold, my understanding is. One, it's through legal counsel and understanding what would be, what would be a policy that would stand up legally given the current decisions and guidance that we have. And second was seeing what the policies looked like in other places. And so, looking at Iowa, looking at Lamar's, looking at other school districts that have had a similar policy in place for a long time and have found success with it. And this is where the bulk of our language has come from. And so, that's where it expanded to make sure that we were meeting our legal requirements for being nondiscriminatory and also adopting best practices that could be identified. Is there any, do you have any recollection or memory of how they dealt with the overnight stays since I presume that that's where it came from? Or is that something that we could reach out to find out more exactly what the practice looked like to go along with that policy to make sure that it was something that parents felt comfortable with?
We didn't, didn't do an extensive, have a lot of conversations with those folks, namely because they haven't experienced it as well. They've had the policy, the schools that we've talked to, in Iowa particularly have had those policies for a number of years. But they didn't have situations where they had state qualifying teams or oral and terp or something where that combination came together. So I'm sure if we found enough schools, we'd eventually find somebody who's had that. But the particular schools that we were surveying and talking to across the borders had the inclusive policy but have never had to exercise it. And that's similar through their, through all of their policies. It's a K-12 policy, but they haven't experienced it at the elementary level. They've experienced it at the high school level. So even though they have policies that are K-12, they have different experiences than we're having in our district. But that, I appreciate that, Shane. That's kind of what my point was, is there's going to be somebody who can advise us on that. And would that be the fact that they added more rooms, or the fact that kids got to pick their partners? What did that look like to make that transition easier? I would like to be able to find some solutions to that if we were given that time.
In those conversations that you had with districts in Iowa where they've had these policies for 10 years, is, am I remembering correctly that you did not have any conversations about problems they had, issues they had, anticipated problems didn't come to fruition? Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct. Yes, yes. The groups that I had talked to, they had many of the same concerns that we're addressing tonight and that their public addressed with them as well. And thankfully, they haven't experienced the adverse reactions that they were anticipating. So they've had, they've had, I guess, a good experience with it up to this point.
And the language of the Iowa policies, as far as the overnight accommodations, is the same as the language that we have put into our policy?
You're correct, yes.
And we don't have, we don't have any known instances in the next couple of months of a case where this is going to be tested before we have the chance to work that out. So we don't have any current students who are going to a state championship who have identified as transgender that we know are going to test this out before we can seek that guidance.
Correct. No known, you know, participants at this point that we would be concerned with.
Thank you. So my feeling would be that if, if, it sounds like it's the practice that needs to be, the sort of, how does this, what does this look like when it's implemented when it comes to overnight stays, not the policy itself that needs to be figured out. And so, given that we have some time to do that and there aren't any current situations, I would still feel comfortable passing the policy as written and then knowing, we need to figure out exactly what that piece looks like in implementation in a way that addresses parent concerns.
That seems reasonable to me as well.
What does legal counsel say on that? Would you rather have a practice laid out versus a policy first, or any comment? Because if something came up next week, what would we do if we still have to hurry up and?
I'm going to leave that up to the board. We just heard from Superintendent Alvey that there are no known instances in which that's going to come into play.
Doug, as a point of order, is there a way to have a separate vote on that piece?
Now, yeah, I actually pondered this. I mean, only in the, I couldn't come up with one, to be honest. I thought about it in terms of the amendment process, but the first and second reading doesn't require a formal motion and vote on amendment process. So, I mean, there isn't. I mean, outside of the straw poll approach. And I, I respect, so I'm now sharing my opinion. I respect exactly what you said, Shane. I think we're thinking the same thing. I'm thinking of it from the side of, does it need, if we're not dealing with it, does it need to be included, particularly if its inclusion is going to hold us up? That's, that's the other thing. I mean, I think ultimately, we have to address it. And that was why I know the policy committee put it in here because the idea was to deal with everything at once rather than piecemealing this out over nine months or something like that.
I was just thinking, Damon, I think we do have a trip coming to Disney, don't we, for sure, choir? But that I think is February, March?
Yeah, spring.
Spring?
Yeah. That is correct. We also have to address what I think is the other issue of how comfortable are we or what, where are we on the parental involvement language? Because right now, it's vague at best.
I'm not sure, Doug, if you need to clarify that. If the expectation is that administrators exercise the same candor they do in every other decision that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, that if students come to us with this concern, we will be sharing it with parents, absent a physical or safety concern for the student, just like we would if they, a child came to us with an abuse allegation, if they came to us with their concerns that they've experimented with drugs or alcohol. You can't tell my mom and dad that because I'm going to be in trouble. There's some candor that's being expressed there between student and counselor or principal. But for the large part, we are working with parents to make sure that they're informed of their child, their minor children, and what's happening with them at school. And I think that's important. So absent that the board tells us that you cannot do that, our administrators are trained to do that. Because we are constantly working, trying to improve transparency to parents, make sure they understand what's happening at school, absent a physical safety concern for the child, of course. So that's, that needs to be vetted out in tonight's discussion.
So you do not think, I, I'm asking you to speak a little bit on behalf of other administrators, but at least for yourself, you feel comfortable engaging that practice with the wording that's here?
Because we do this every day already. This is really no different than the issues that we face in our buildings every single day with kids. And our administrators or professionals are trained and they've got expertise in dealing with sensitive issues and good judgment to call in the professionals if necessary to take it to the next level if there's concerns of abuse or any kind of other safety concern for the kids. So in my eyes, this is just another hand partnership with the parents. So I think it should be there. I don't think it needs to be written in draft form. We don't do that for any other case in our district. The principals just do this day-to-day.
Question on a practice statement. If a child came to you and they're, not to the counselor, they're under 18 and wanted to, in the school district, identify what the gender they want, how would we handle that?
Well, the very first, one of the very first tenants of your thing is that the student has to have a persistent, inconsistent, insistent documented identity. So if this student is really going to have to be able to demonstrate that, they're going to have to provide some documentation as part of this process. So it won't go to the restrooms being open to students until we've gotten to that phase. Once again, we've got parent involvement.
See, it just said parent involvement, or here we then, and we said it may require documentation.
Yeah. So if I ask for documentation, or the principal were to ask for documentation, they would have, that's part of this tenet of getting, it's part of the request for this, this identity to use the restroom for which they have their asserted identity. So in my view, that they have to have, that part of it has to be taken care of with family or their physician or whatever documentation that they're using. So I don't think that that really comes into play unless a student is trying to not communicate this concern with their parents. with their parents. At which time, we'd have to weigh that if that's a safety concern for the student.
Thoughts on that, in terms of comfort with practice, or comfort with more, with stronger language on parental involvement?
So are we saying that as the policy is written, we are accepting the discretion of the administrator, or the counselor, or whomever, the school representative? We're accepting their discretion with regard to communication with the parent, and we're accepting their discretion with regard to making sure that the accommodations for overnight trips are reasonable?
If, if you're asking me, I, I think that the, the overnight accommodations is, is, is not at play. If, in my view, that, that's, that's not part of this discussion tonight. It's, it's too far of a reach for us to accomplish tonight, unless you plan to be here tomorrow morning at nine, when the next meeting is supposed to take place. That's, that's a big, big topic. It's a big ask of the people out here to take, take and do that tonight. My view is that that gets removed from the policy, and we, we deal with that down the road. If you wanna pass a policy on restrooms tonight, the restroom policy, in my view, is we will inform parents, and we will get parents to be partners in this, unless the safety of the child is at stake, at which time, we would handle it with a different stroke. And that, again, the, the transgender student who is, meets the qualifications of your policy, would be gained, given access to the bathroom which would say identify. Sports is on its own. That's, that's a state issue. We've had five students in the entire state of South Dakota since 2013. It is not a, a big player in your policy tonight. Your big player is the restroom. And do you feel like the restrooms are adequately, could facilitate the needs of the students within the district that ask for it? If so, you've got a couple pieces of policy, documentation from the parent, and that we will involve parents in the discussion, and then making sure that they've gone through the application process, or the documentation process. And once that's accounted for, then discreetly, that child is, is getting to use the restroom for which they identify. And again, if this is handled correctly, you guys don't even know about it happening, and the folks out here don't know it's happening, because we've got students, and parents, and faculty working together to discreetly handle these students' needs behind the scenes. And again, that's not to hide anything. It's to follow the law, and to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all the students in, in the district.
I think, I think if we, I feel like I'm in the situation of, like, deciding which rights we will discriminate on, versus which ones we won't at this meeting, right? And sort of like, what are we willing to cut in order to, to, to get a vote on ensuring that they have access to some of the things that they should have rights for, based on our non-discrimination policy versus not others? So that part makes me feel uncomfortable. I think that as, you know, until we address the entirety of the original draft, which includes locker rooms and showers and overnight stays, we are still, we are still in a situation where we are not fully biding by our non-discriminatory policy. And so I think that it's on us to continue that work, to make sure that that gets done. We have very specific reasons why we're not doing that on the facilities, to make sure that we're able to update those facilities to everybody's comfort level in the meantime. If it is the will of the board to wait on the overnight stays, to figure out the logistics of that, I think that I can be okay with that. But I still feel like we need to recognize that we are still discriminating on the basis of gender identity by not providing equal access in the meantime. And so we have to be working very diligently toward bringing the entirety of the policy up to date.
Does that mean you wanna vote on the whole policy as written, or?
Well, I think, I mean, ultimately, it's a second reading, so there is that vote. What we can do in a, a second reading is make these changes, to remove things. And I, you know, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Shane. I unders, I also, I don't want to hold up any of this, because we're still working out a detail that we can work out. And that, that's what I, you know, I don't, I don't want this to be viewed in anyone's mind, like we're saying, okay, this is a concession I'm willing to give. I don't think anyone's saying, I'll vote for restroom equity and access if you do this. That, at least, that's not the message I'm trying to say. I want to, to get it done. I feel very comfortable with the wording. I still would like to see something more specific about, you know, the determination of consistently asserted gender will be determined in collaboration with parent guardian and designated school official. Whether or not there's, if you wanna have that extra language, and I do respect what Brent has said about maybe we don't wanna have that language in there. But that's, I, I do feel strongly that there is, we have some parental obligation, and not in the sense of a legal obligation, but in terms of a collaborative educational obligation, to make sure we create the environment. And I think that's what it does. And I also remember, this is where, you know, the, forgive me for saying this, but the ghost of Jim McCullough is echoing in my mind about the difference between will, shall, and must, when it comes to writing policies. And I know there are varying degrees of what they require you to do.
Thank you for that, Doug. I would just follow up with that, and I would use permissive language here. No mandatory language of shall, right? This is permissive in the sense of, you know, we're gonna handle it on a case-by-case basis, and we're not necessarily gonna provide explicit notice to each and every parent, in every instance.
Doug, would you feel, in adding back in the language about parent and guardians as a part of the conversation, would you still feel comfortable if we included the language of just absent, absent a concern for student's safety?
Absolutely, yeah.
So is that language that, I mean, that feels like a minor modification that's still intent with the original first reading of the policy, that's just providing clarity? And that's, so is that language that can be provided, just adding back in parents and guardians, and then putting absent a concern for student's safety?
Yeah, it does, it does to me. Because it actually, I think, is describing exactly what Damon said the practice would be under the current wording. So it's just clarifying the current wording.
Do we have that under procedure previously?
Yes. So right now, we have the determination of consistently asserted gender may be determined in collaboration of any of the following: parent, guardian, counselor, building administrator, and physician. So perhaps we can simply add a line in there that indicates absent a compelling concern for safety, the parent or guardian will also be included in communication?
I would advise against adding that language.
Can I ask why?
Will. Mandatory language. I think if you add back the language, communication with the school, parents, I'd have to check the prior draft, where you have the collaborative approach is key. I believe that addresses the practice that Damon discusses, as opposed to outlining a mandatory requirement.
Again, I feel like the vast majority of these situations are going to include the parent or the guardian. And I don't know if that makes any difference at all, but it seems that it will be a unique situation in which we would not be communicating with the parent.
I agree, but I have to advise against creating obligations that are more restrictive than federal law.
So based on the advice of our legal counsel, are we comfortable moving forward with it as is, understanding what the practice within the district will be regarding communication, and how it will be enforced?
I'm comfortable. I would expect that, well, I guess you all could expect that I may come back to the next meeting with some suggested language to modify this immediately. I also do think we should withdraw the overnight accommodations for the time being. I mean, if we're gonna come back and start to modify it, let's, I mean, that's, Shane, your question was, can we do this in pieces? We can by doing things like that.
I agree. I'd like to do more on the parental rights and overnight accommodations.
But that can be done through subsequent amendments? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think the parental rights can be. I, I feel, I'm confident with what Mr. Alvey has said about how they will handle the practice. The wording allows that. We'll expect that to be the case. We've heard lots of people talking about practice being important.
But adding the overnight accommodations back in can be done through a subsequent amendment?
Absolutely, yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
Just like the locker room piece?
Yes, just like the locker. Could be done at the same time, if we feel comfortable with it. I, I, I'm not trying to be a guiding chair, so I'm, I, if, if we're talking about a change like that, and I don't, I'm not trying to put the words in anyone's mouth, but the motion would be to approve the second reading with the following amendment, removal of section overnight accommodations.
Just to clarify, then, from what I've heard, then, is that the practice of informing parents would be the standard, that our administrative team would be held to, that we would also be looking at, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my notes here, looking at, you know, the, the, each student case on a case-by-case basis, under the umbrella of transgender, as long as they've met the portions of the policy about consistently, persistently, and insistently identifying, then as long as they've met that threshold, as well as the working with parents, then that's the discussion that's, would get passed in tonight's reading, if we did that. Minus perhaps the, the overnight accommodations to be adjusted later. Am I...
That's how I understand it. So that we are, we're, and just to restate.
Right.
We are voting pretty good on the procedure section, with the expressed understanding that we are not prohibiting you from communicating that to parents, and that the wording may allows you, and, and you're telling us that would be the practice.
That addresses...
With our, with our full faith and trust in you, that it would not be shared in, if there were any concerns about student safety, in doing so, just as you would on not on other issues that you've dealt with?
Yep, thank you, absolutely. I know from the, some concerns and calls that, that I had taken this last week, those were three very distinct issues that parents had concerns with. There are still some more concerns there that probably folks addressed this evening. But those, those three things were, were specific calls I had taken this week on that concern. So, thank you.
Okay. So is there understanding of what we would be approving? So my, my, very long ago, direction on parliamentary procedure is that the chair doesn't make motions, so.
So moved.
Sorry, was that Shane?
Yes.
Okay. So can I restate, to make sure that I understand? So the motion is, everything, but we're pulling overnight accommodations?
The mo, yeah. The motion is to adopt policy JOK as written, removing out the exception on overnight accommodations to be reconsidered with the locker room shower discussion at a later date, once we have figured out the logistics of that.
Okay. I have a motion to approve second reading as amended?
Second.
Second. So a motion by Shane, second by Carol. So as I indicated to the board earlier, and I'll now indicate to the public, given the clarity of the vote on this, I will ask, I am calling for a roll call vote. So we will simply call, I will call your name in alphabetical order, same order we do the attendance, and you may vote yea, nay, or abstain. So Shane?
Yea.
Rachel?
Nay.
Me, yea. Jim?
Nay.
Nay. Carol?
Yea.
Yea.
So the policy has been passed with those understandings under procedure, and the, we'll revisit the overnight accommodation. So at this time, there are no overcom, overnight accommodation expectations.
Question then would be the informing of parents, as to when this would start. When would you like us to communicate this?
Tomorrow.
And I, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, classified wage increase. Finance, or, Mr. Alvey? I don't know, who would like to address this one?
We'll start, and then Finance can jump in wherever they need to. As we had been talking about with our Policy Committee, as well as our Finance Committee, throughout the summer, our district would like to propose an increase to our classified wage earners, because of, one, we've, we've got a dedicated group of professionals in our building, in all of our buildings, and as well as trying to stay competitive with our, our neighbors, we would like to advocate for a 50 cent an hour increase to all of our classified folks, starting immediately, as well as some differential for different job classifications for different folks in different positions. So we have that outlined in your, your proposed package before you, and we did approve this through Finance. I don't know if they have any questions or things to add to that, but proposing an increase for our classified earners.
I was wondering if the Finance Committee had any discussion on backdating it to the start of the school year for those increases?
We did not on that, but we just, we're looking at more from now going forward, for both retention and increases.
We did not discuss that explicitly, but I would not be opposed to it.
I think we capped it at a total dollar amount. So if we approved it tonight, there wouldn't be enough, there wouldn't be in the funding. We approved a set dollar amount, and then let Kevin and Damon allocate it how they saw fit for retention. And I'd rather keep it the same, to approve it, to go forward. You okay with that, Shane?
Yeah, I was trying to remember, I felt like the, the total spent came in underneath of that, it came in underneath of that cap that we approved, but I don't know if there's enough left to be able to do it.
There wasn't, because what, we, we spent to the max where you gave us, so.
We'll just make a motion when we can to approve that.
Do you wanna clarify for the public what that total dollar amount was for the general and the special ed fund?
Sure. The calculation for that, and this included the SDRS and the taxes, so basically the, the benefit portion of this included, as well as the wages, was $26,512.80 from the general fund, and $23,436.00 from the special education fund. Do we have these all in one line item here? Yes. And we also had consideration for increasing the substitute pay for both the teacher subs and subbing for an EA. These are usually represented in, you know, a per day, but we actually have our substitutes on the time clock, so we pretty much have to do it on a per hour basis, to boil it down from to per hour. so we pretty much have to do it on a per hour basis, to boil it down to per hour. Currently, subbing for a teacher is $12.50. The discussion that we had had would be to move that up as close as, as it would be to $125 per day, which would be an hourly rate of $15.60, and then moving the subbing for an EA from $11.25 up to what would be an approximate comparable percentage up to $13.75 to, to help bridge that gap there as well.
Any discussion on keeping the subpay for a teacher and the EA a little bit closer together? Not so different? Or is there that much difference of duties? I mean.
There's some difference in duties. We've had that discussion. We haven't vetted that out to, because we've had experience on both sides of this discussion, both Kevin and I, so we haven't vetted that out, if we would encourage that. What we don't want is for our substitute pay to be skewed so greatly over your salaries of your classified folks, and that's, that's what would be the potential if we went to the full $125 a day for our classified subs. Now, we fully understand that this is obviously, is something that the board would support moving forward immediately with the idea that hopefully the governor has a great budget proposal for us in December, which opens up negotiations for further discussions come normal negotiations time. This is, is obviously something that takes place currently, and maybe Kevin, you could just share how we would plan to pay for all of this.
The largest dollar impact that we've got to our current budget was represented in what Mr. Alvey had mentioned earlier tonight with our fall enrollment. Being up 85 students obviously has a very significant impact on our budget, both in those student counts for the general education, general fund, funding, and also on the special education side as well.
I guess as long as we like, we like rolling admission, or average, rolling averages unless it benefits us, and then we'll take the money, right?
I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for, for doing this and recognizing the hard work of our classified staff.
Absolutely. So this can be considered as a single vote item at the end? So the, the motion would include a raise for the wage from this point forward for $12.50? Would it be this pay period, or would it be hours starting tomorrow?
Which just happens to be today as the start of a new pay period, so.
And where, yeah, good timing. Excellent. And that will include actually the new item, the two new hires. The information at your desk has them at 12, but they would go to 12.50. Okay, item D. So this is the library book selection, and I will again call for public comment because this was a public raised issue. Todd, would you like to speak? Come forward, please.
Long night. Sorry to make it a little bit longer. One of the positive things about this, I've had a lot of conversations with people I've never met, I'm friendly with, parents have talks, maybe opposite sides of the bathroom policies, but that's a positive thing. One of the things, parents from speaking with each other, talking to their kids more about maybe some specific questions at school. There's some books that have been presented in our library system that's, I, I know it was brought up last week, but I don't, it wasn't brought up with examples, and I have examples. I bought, as a parent that heard about these books, I bought some, and I read a couple. First one's called A Good Kind of Trouble. I'm just going to take some parts throughout this book. Daddy talks a lot about what he calls white privilege. Mama chew on my lip for a minute. Watching the blue and red lights get farther away. Do the police hate us black people? Hannah told me that black kids sit on the basketball courts. Hannah is really weird about race stuff. Not only does she tease me about having black friends, she is, she only has black friends. This, this book is in a, a school of second graders. I forgot to mention that immediately. The school that this book is about has a, is called, is named after Ralph Waldo Emerson. Daddy smirks at mama. They're teaching the dead white men a lot earlier these days, huh? Of the things you'll be taught in school are from a certain perspective, dead white men's perspective. I believe if you were alive now, which is, this is referring to Ralph Waldo Emerson. This is a teacher talking to students in a class setting. They use teachers to have these conversations with large groups of their classes, with young kids. I believe if you were alive now, he would be a strong supporter of Black Lives Matter movement. Again, that's a teacher saying that. Some people are confused about why businesses get vandalized in protest. That can seem wrong, but I'm sure what, I'm not sure what his rights, way to act if people in your community seem to be unfairly targeted by the police. Mama and daddy don't want me watching the videos of black people getting shot, or choked, or beat up by police, but there's been so many of them, I can't help but see some. I wonder if Ms. Jacobs is right. Would Ralph Waldo Emerson support Black Lives Matter even though he's a dead white man? Hannah stares at her phone for a minute. He's a brother? She asks, all shockedy voice. So I say, Hannah, hands me the phone. I'm surprised he's black. I didn't know you would be down like that. I'm going to try to skip some because it's late and I'm tired, and you're tired too. Janice isn't black, she's white. Black is constantly capitalized when you refer to race. White is not in this book. Something else I noticed. Chapter 25 is entitled Black Power. In every chapter, there's a black power fist. This is a class or a school of second graders. When a black person gets shot and nothing happens, it's like we don't matter, and that makes me angry. And yeah, it makes me want to do something violent, make some noise, get attention. It's not fair that I have to take some school days off because my, because of my list, I would be afraid to live there. I don't know if there are a lot of white students have to worry about that. Again, white is not capitalized, black is. I'm going to stop here. You know what? I think it's time. This Oreo, that's a racist slang, found out she's not as cute as she thinks she is. Oreo, seriously, I'm not white on the inside, black on the outside. What's your issue? Second book I read, I've read several. I'm going to read from somebody who had a better summary than what I can do just by reading from it. Chapter three introduces ideas of white privilege. Chapter five promotes race essentialism and teaches children that there is such a thing as being black and being white. Chapter six teaches kids that racist ideas in the past are tied to racist ideas of today, teaching kids racial scapegoating. Chapter eight teaches President Abraham was actually for slavery. Chapter 23 gives shout-outs to founders of Black Lives Matter. A lot of them own multi-million dollar properties. It mentions that, which is true, even though they're Marxists. Chapter 17 continues the CRT rejection of reason, objectivity, and empiricalism by suggesting that because racists use math and science in the past, these things aren't themselves to blame, not the individuals who use them. I asked for copies of records, of books that have been brought into the library in my kid's school in the last year, but I was told these records do not exist. To this day, I've received nothing. In communicating and talking with administration, what I learned from them is there's, has been zero oversight over the system, and they had no idea these books were in our libraries until parents told them. Parent-teacher conferences on October 7th, there was one display rack promoting new books to students. One side had eight books. One book was about overcoming America's racist society. One was about children not identifying with the traditional gender roles. One was about a plantation owner and the slave trade. One was about stamps, which I, I read. I didn't want to quote from it. One was about a gay rights leader in the past, which I don't have a problem with, but five out of the eight books were about those topics. This is a school of second graders. Process to challenge books is severely flawed. Other than searching through the countless and constantly changing titles through the online library, on their website, the only way we could find out about these is if they're brought in, promoted, and/or read by our children, which by then, to me, it's too late. My wife and I followed the first step of the challenge process, but we were ignored, so we moved on to the next step, without community knowing what is going on, what, why this was brought up last week. I feel not putting pressure on this school district to act, that there will be none taken. This, this policy or this book issue came out of nowhere. When the debate began about changing our bathroom policies, and the book questioning the definition of gender was discussed with students by a faculty member. My children have great classroom teachers, but my trust in this school's system right now is damaged. To parents and grandparents finally hearing why this issue was brought up last week, this is the reason why. Thank you.
So it's my understanding that there are, we do have four books in the review process, and that they're at the point of committee review?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Nelson, just for review, the board has been given an example of the, the, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, he took off. Well, basically, that's all right. I can catch him later though. But for the rest of you that are, they're in observation. Todd, thanks. I was just, just sharing with the, the board that they've got a copy of, of the, the policy that's, that you're referring to, and the, the chance to request for reconsideration of books. So the process now is in the hands of the principal and a committee of folks that are outlined in that policy to review that, and then at which point that, that committee would make a recommendation within 60 days, and if, if nobody's satisfied with that recommendation, then the board would be the final board of appeal in that process. So just for you and for others, you're already familiar with the process. Obviously, you're in it. But the ones that are at home that didn't know what the process looked like, that's, that's how this will work out now.
I understand that the first step of the process is the, is probably the most flawed because you go directly to the person that put these books out there. There's no timeline to this as far as the first step. We were, I think it was a week. Maybe that's not enough time. To me, it is. For something this serious, to not even say, yes, we will get back to you. Yes, we're working on it. Yes, we're aware. Thank you for the information. We will follow up. Nothing. Silence. So I know you brought it up last week, but you didn't, and I should have spoke up and said something last week, but I'm not the only parents that know about this. This is getting around. I feel, I have a position where I can, I'm willing to stand up and say something about this because this, this crosses political lines. It's about getting in front of parents' rights as far as setting moral grounds, teaching morals to our children. Like I said, there's a, there's a, there's a book on that stand about somebody that promoted for the rights of gay people, and that's great. They should know about those people. But five out of the eight books was about that, those topics in the class of second grade, grade, the school of second graders. So I don't know, I guess I mentioned that already, but like I said, I understand the process, but the awareness wasn't there. And my, I feel like the awareness needs to be put out there, and everybody watching. You know, I don't want to say put pressure to you people, but the awareness wasn't there, and there was no awareness brought last week, and that's, that was disappointing to not see happen. Because you know about it, and you put up a PowerPoint presentation with a policy or procedures, but no meat to it as to why this is brought up to you and other faculty or administrators in the school system that had no idea this was going on. If you're for it, that's fine, but it's my right to instill morals, and, and when they're, when our kids are older, they can do whatever they want, but when they're in my household, they're my kids. They're not your kids. And somebody stepped over that line and took over that role that they decided to. So awareness needed to happen and did not, and this has been weeks where I've asked for that to happen. Nothing. So I hate public speaking. I'm glad the audience is 5% of what it was earlier, because I hate being up here. I appreciate the efforts. If, what efforts do happen, I hope there's something. So unless you have any more questions from me, that's all I have.
Don, Delene?
Excuse me. My name is Don Delene, and I was not planning to speak on this topic, and I would like the opportunity to discuss with the gentleman or just speak. I just want to urge the board to be very, very cautious about getting into the censorship business. The books that he was talking about seem to me to be discussing important issues. I trust the teachers. I could, I could have wonderful discussions about those books. I would trust as a parent, I could have wonderful discussion about those books. But the idea that somehow the school board is going to get into the business saying, these books are no, can't be read, I think is extraordinarily dangerous, and I would simply say, approach that at your peril. Thank you.
So I, I will ask that the policy committee, because I know you don't have much going on, do take a look at this. I think the, the timeline issues are something that should be added at every stage. I mean, right now, we could hear a response to a challenge, you know, so we give the other party unlimited time to respond. And it just, it makes sense that we can take care of this, to get that cleaned up. I, I actually think the policy functions well. I do think the first step is appropriate because I think, you know, the idea there is that somebody says, oh my gosh, we ended up with this book in our library by mistake, and it is absolutely not acceptable by any standard, and you could get it done with right there and not go through the process, so.
Just for the record, you know, one of the aspects that did come as a result of this discussion with Todd and some others in the community was that our administrators will be much more active on the, the process because currently we have a group of librarians that determine the books that are being purchased with the consultation of principals or teachers or parents that sometimes recommend books for curriculum or whatever the, is the hot topic, the, the great authors, you know, the library guilds, the Caldecott Award winners, all of the things that you've traditionally seen as invited in the library still continues today, although some of those have suspect topics from one family to another. I think what Todd's major concern is the promotion of books, not so much the fact that books are in the library as the fact that, that some parents feel that, that the promotion by staff is what could, has potential for abuse. So we will deal with that. We'll make sure that we're doing it consistently and fairly. We don't want to be in the book censorship business, but at, at the end of the day, our administrators will take a much more active role in terms of what, what's entering our library so that when they're called and says, hey, there's 4,000 books in your library. What is this one about? They'll be able to, to give them some sort of an idea about what those topics are, so.
I just want to be clear. It's not currently in policy. You just have a practice that you've used, right?
That, that, sorry, yeah, that is policy. That, 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 that is in board district policy as well as on the.
Why doesn't it look like a typical policy? Because it, to me, this is not a policy. It's not date titled when it was approved. It looks like maybe, maybe it's an attachment of some sort, maybe.
Charlotte could share, but this has probably been in case for 18 years or more.
Right, but it's not in board policy.
My name is Charlotte Prowl. I am librarian at the middle school. The policy was approved in 2013. I don't know where it is in the board. I don't have its numbers.
We don't have to whisper.
It's board approved, 2013.
We can look at.
We can look at maybe than adding it to the policy book, etc., if it's not been.
The policy that I have that I just keep is the one that I gave you.
It looks like this?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not.
I can find you the other one tomorrow. I just want to add one more thing. As one of the people that does the purchasing of the books and the sharing of the books with all of our students, it's really, really important to remember that a good library contains something in it to offend everybody, okay? Because the flip side of that is it contains something in it that is going to appeal to everybody, and we try really, really hard to do that. The books that have been coming out in the last five to eight years that change and have shared so much more in diversity than was ever out there before, give us so much more opportunity to connect with students. I spend a lot of time with my kids, and granted, I teach middle schoolers, but I spend a lot of time with my kids talking about the really important fact that books serve for both the author and the reader. Books serve as a window to the world, and books also serve as a mirror back on yourself. And if we can do that and help our students, you know, it's, it's everything that we just spent the last three hours discussing for every different kid, and it's, it's really, really important to have that opportunity to do that with all of them. So I can find you the actual policy for that tomorrow. I do know that it was board approved at some point. Any other questions for me?
No. No.
My name is Christopher Heck. I have one elementary-aged son that will never be a part of the Vermillion School System. It's what I've witnessed growing up in this community as an adult. I came here to USD at 18 years old, and I've been in this community ever since. One of the things that I want to speak on specifically on this topic is the power of books, the power of the written word. Spoken word is one thing. Spoken word is one thing entirely, different than written word, okay? Written word, once it's on paper, gives it so much power. And when that power is promoted for good or for evil or for indifference, when that power is promoted by an individual and it is not taken into consideration, perhaps, that the subject matter would be completely inappropriate for a second grader, completely inappropriate for an eighth grader, completely inappropriate for human consumption, okay? Those are things that need to be considered with absolutely every topic. Sure, books are meant to arouse the senses and perhaps to offend and to appease and all of these things and to appeal to someone's inner demons, perhaps, or perhaps their inner angels, okay? But whatever it may be, those ideas need to be addressed with such delicacy. A second-grade mind, how old is that? Seven, eight? The things that we introduce to a seven or an eight-year-old mind are going to stick with them for the rest of their lives if they're powerful enough. Now, I'm here to tell you, I believe I had an excellent education. I had a private Christian education for many of those years. But I also grew up in the public school system when that was the only thing that was available to me. I went to the University of South Dakota. I did not graduate, not that that's important. But the teachers that I remember the most, the ones that had the most impact on me were the ones that spoke from personal experience, not the ones that came from, you know, a specific political or, you know, or socio-political viewpoint and tried to indoctrinate. That didn't really exist much 20, 25 years ago. That seems to be the latest trend. And it's disturbing to watch. There are very, very few, it would seem, teachers, not specifically in this school district, but just at large, that have truly our students' best interests in mind. It's just from what I can witness from my own two eyes, what I read about in the newspapers, what I see on the nightly news. And you don't have to ask me where I get my news. I would like to think that I have a pretty diverse news source. And but what I understand is, is that, in my own personal experience, I should say, is that the written word is so incredibly powerful and can be used for good or for bad, and it's something that just needs to have more oversight. That's all it really is. I happen to know a couple of librarians in my life. One of them is family, the other is just an acquaintance. And I've seen a lot of, you know, powerful and offensive things in libraries, and as well they should be, as well they should be. But those powerful and offensive things do not need to be pushed on our young minds. That's something that is better addressed, perhaps, at the collegiate level. I can honestly say that the most offensive concept that I was ever exposed to were within the halls of USD. I mean, it's just the way that it is, and it's probably the way that it should be. But you're an adult mind, you're a developed mind at that point, and you can certainly be able to make your own choices at that point. And it's not doctrine, and it's not gospel, and you cannot, you know, when you guys make those decisions, and like, oh, look, here's our eight popular books that we want you to check out. And like Todd mentioned, five of those are rather controversial subjects, and certainly for somebody who's in the second grade. It needs to be addressed more delicately, more carefully at every single step of the way.
Thank you.
For the sake of everybody's time, the policy is found at II AAB and II AAC.
Thank you, Brent.
Is there more meat to it than just this?
My name is Melody Bowe. I'm a student here at USD, also a registered voter here in Clay County. While I would agree that the written word is very powerful, I would also say that it is included under the First Amendment, and I would agree with previous speakers in cautioning the board in getting into the field of censorship. Wasn't planning on speaking on this, but seems like we're getting into some risky territory here. So just, I would urge you to think very thoroughly about your actions going forward. So thank you for your time.
So just to clarify for the public, there is no action item here. There is no policy change in front of us. So, okay, we will move on to item E, approval of the ionization project bid. I don't imagine they could get a better timing to get a bid approved.
So as part of our return-to-school plan and use of ESER dollars for mitigations to help keep our students and staff safe, one of the things that our building committee and finance committee, as well as our administration, has been advocating for is an ionization system for our school district, which would include the ability to change the molecular level of viruses in our building by adding these apparatuses to our heating and cooling ventilation systems. And so we've had proposals by folks in the heating and cooling industry come and share with us different products that would help take care of those needs. And we went out for bid, and we did receive one bid back for the project to include ionization in every building in the district. Once again, these are portable, that once we finish our elementary schools, we can remove these devices from our HVAC systems in both Jolly and Austin, transport them to the new facility, and have those ongoing ionization capabilities in our brand-new elementary within the next 18 months or two years when that's complete. Finance Committee, Building Committee, Mr. Kosher, anything to add to that? As you could see, the base price for that product would be $237,900. We would use ESER dollars, which is the COVID relief dollars that the federal government has administered to school districts. Although, we'll be honest, our ESER III grant, which is where we wrote this, has not been finalized from the state of South Dakota. The schools that have written similar grants to this previous to us have had them accepted. So I guess we're very confident that we'll be able to move forward and have it, although I can't, I don't have the documentation from the state before us today.
Yeah, I guess I'll speak to the ionization specifically. I have seen it approved in another district. This is really, should be one of the bigger slam dunks that they have in terms of ESER-related qualified expenses.
And I think on this one, the Finance Committee agreed to move forward. Oops. Agreed to. Agreed to move forward, subject to it being approved.
Any other questions?
The timeframe for this would be, we'd order it immediately, and we hope that it would be installed over by, prior to Christmas break, when the kids come back second semester. It would be in place.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's maybe just worth pointing out that it's not, it's not a system designed just exclusively for COVID, but it's going to make us safer during every flu season, during every strep season, during all of the things. And so it's not a big expense for a very, you know, limited use, but it's something that's going to hopefully reduce sick days all overall going forward.
Absolutely. Great, great product.
I just, I don't know. I know the public earlier, but it was all on the issue. I understand the ionization. I agreed something to help solve this. But my question though, for over here, we talked about flu season and viruses. How often is the HVAC system in these buildings cleaned, thoroughly cleaned, not just the filtration, but actually thoroughly cleaned? That is a question I've had since I've been coming to school board meetings. How often has that been happening? When was the last time the system was thoroughly cleaned and getting these ionization based? Are you considering cleaning the system before you put them in so they're far more effective, or are you just going to put them into the dirty system?
I can't speak to the last time they were cleaned. The contract that we have with our groups, they do do routine maintenance, filter changes, and cleanings. But if you're asking for every duct in every building, I can't honestly say what the last time that was completely from the HVAC system's entrance to its exit, if that's been done in recent years. Part of this, we had not considered if that would be part of this bid process is to clean it out completely. Our understanding of the ionization would be that obviously, once this is started, it's killing whatever's in that ventilation system as it's recycling the air, because it's 24/7 recycled air. So I can't say that we were ever promoted that that would be something that we would consider. Do you have some, I mean, suggestion or some knowledge that says that we need to do that as part of this process? Is that where your question is?
Like I said, I'm just curious. You know, being in school year after year, it was all the virus, you know, the current virus, the current virus, the current virus. But my question is, because I do have severe allergies, is when was the last time the buildings were, the HVAC were thoroughly cleaned? Because that makes a huge difference in air conditioning. When was the last time all of them, from in to out, were thoroughly cleaned? And when was the last time all the carpeting was thoroughly cleaned? Because the HVAC system and carpeting is where everything rests.
Correct.
And like I said, ionization to help with all this, and I know for everything, that's great. But it seems to me you're kind of trying to put a band-aid on it to fix it. Well, let's put this in, and maybe consider getting carpet thoroughly cleaned, getting the system thoroughly cleaned before you put these in, because then I think they'd work far better.
Correct.
And I understand it's a matter of money.
Yeah.
But if you're going to do it, how about start off doing it right instead of half-assed?
Right.
And then just put the systems in and hope for the best.
Right. In terms of the carpet, that's by, twice a year, all those carpets are cleaned twice a year in terms of shampooing and cleaning. They're, of course, vacuumed regularly. So with HEPA filters in our ventilation system as well as in our cleaning systems, we're confident that we're getting out many of the allergens. But like you said, some things live inside those ductwork. The ionization process is supposed to kill 99% of germs, viruses, as well as mold, bacteria. So I don't know if the thorough cleaning is necessary, but it certainly, obviously, makes sense that the cleaner the product is when it starts, the more efficient it would run. So thank you for that.
Dana, we could easily get a report from Johnson Controls on our PMs that have been done over the last few years, too.
Right.
And I believe the high school probably received a thorough cleaning about a month ago.
Yeah, obviously, we've, that ductwork was replaced, obviously, in the area of the fire. That was all, it's all brand new because of that fire damage, but yes.
Okay, so this one would have an action item as well as items. So that was item E. Item F, the approval of the chiller or HVAC improvements?
Similar proposal here. This actually predates, those of you that have been on the board for a while, that what we've had happen in our, in our high school gymnasium, our main gymnasium, is our chiller unit, the compressor systems of there started to fail during the summer. So there's four compressors that run those chillers that are in our high school gymnasium. Not sure if it was a lightning strike or what exactly caused. We had, ended up having, losing one during the summer, lost one a month or so later, right before school started, lost a third one a month ago. And so we've got one active compressor in that chiller unit. The good news is, being the fact that we're at the temperatures we are, we no longer need air conditioning for this time of the year. But the long term is obviously, we need to replace that. That's at least 20 to 24 weeks out to have your chiller and your compressors fabricated and installed. So we're looking at next spring, which would be perfect timing for our spring and summer activities. While we were in this discussion, we discussed with Johnson Controls, who runs our, basically our systems for all of our buildings. We currently do not have HVAC systems that work, that are functional. They were never added to our auxiliary gym, our wrestling room, or our gymnastics room. It's been a goal of the building committee in the district for the last 20 years to have those facilities be cooled. Underneath the current proposal, while we're making the improvements to the chiller that's required, we can activate ESER one or ESER two dollars or ESER three dollars to enhance the system and qualify for the same dollars that we just talked about with our ionization. So we have proposed that in our ESER two, ESER three grant, three grant. But once again, it hasn't been finalized and approved. We're confident it will be, which will, one, allow us to move forward and solve a problem that the district has to solve anyway with the chiller, and also enhance our capabilities in the future, which is something the district's wanted to do. So that being said, we have a proposal from Johnson Controls here to upgrade the chiller, the compressors, the tubes, all the things that are necessary to finish this project. The only caveat is, is on November 12th, there will be a 6% increase on these prices. So we are looking at a $10,000 increase. Right now, the base price for that improvement and repair will be $207,680. Mr. Koacher, I'm sorry, there was options?
Right. We also had the add option, number one there, for the VFDs to help the system run more efficiently. In our conversation there, it helps to regulate that so that it's not having to run quite as often or as hard when it is running. And the estimated payback for that kind of an addition there, which would be $14,720, the information that they provided us is that the estimated payback would be within two years on something like that as an add.
So tonight, our recommendation will be that we move forward with the project immediately that we have to get the chiller ordered. The district has to come up with the dollars itself to pay for the chiller regardless. We would take that out of our repair budget. And if so desired, if the board feels comfortable with moving forward, we could enter into the contract to Johnson Controls that, under the stipulation that, you know, we're going to move forward with the chiller unit being ordered tomorrow. We'd sign the contract. And we can deduct the option, which is the cooling units for the auxiliary gym, wrestling room, and the gymnastics room, and we could deduct $130,000 from the project. And once we have gotten final confirmation from the ESER III grant from the state, that could come tomorrow, or it might not come till December 1st, then we could reinstitute that portion of this at the December meeting. It will not slow the process down. It won't hinder us from having our chiller fixed and moving forward this spring. So if the board is feeling confident that, similar to other schools that have done this, they've had approval of this, we could go forward with full approval. If you would like to not be so bold as to guarantee those dollars until we have them in our, in our grant approval, then you could just move forward with the grant proposal, excuse me, the chiller proposal minus the deduct one, which is on your second page of your packet there. As well as you could add on the F or the VFD that Mr. Koacher explained, which is an efficiency component that we will want on our chillers in the future. The fact that we don't have them is a little bit dated. We need to have those chillers there. So we're asking for approval, either full completion of the project moving forward or just with the chiller unit and the VFDs so that we can move forward and at least get the chiller started. We could, we could add on the deduct back at the December meeting if the board is willing to do so.
Finance looked it over. Would we agree to just go forward with everything?
I think we had planned to go forward with everything because of the level of confidence we had with the ESER dollars. And I think that we, I would support the adding on the option for greater efficiency to bring them up to current standards.
So that's the recommendation, Finance Committee. Go for it. Put the VFD.
Tom's good to me.
For time's sake, we'll keep going.
Okay. Item G is the hire of two employees for BSA that were not included in the consent agenda. For BSA, Cara Clemmie. For BSA, Cara Clemmie, and as an educational aide, Tracy Gilkerson. So the motion would be approving items C, the wage increase, the ionization bid, the chiller HVAC improvements with option, and the hiring of these two employees. So moved. By Jim?
Second.
Sorry, does that change? My voice recognition starts to go downhill after a moment. Okay, all in favor of approving those items under C, E, F, and G signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Motion passes. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask the board members to look at the written reports. I don't know that there's anything in there we must address.
Nothing to address, but please take a look at the board goals and initiatives. We had some timeframes and some progress reports notes there. Did want to mention, too, next week is American Education Week, so thank you, Board, for providing cookies next week to the staff. So we'll get those ordered up and take care of for you. And a reminder to the board that before next month's December 13th meeting, we will meet with the legislators for basically a coffee and treats prior to this meeting in the Jack Powell conference room here. So we'll have an hour with your local legislators to talk about the upcoming session. Our administrative team has already had their one meeting with them, and you guys will get your chance in December, so thank you.
Okay. We do need to act on the financial report.
Motion to accept.
Second. By Rachel, second by Jim. Any questions, comments, Mr. Kosher? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Financial reports are accepted and approved.
I will quickly just mention from Finance Committee, we also completed our required audit of the months that we went through, and so we've figured out some process things there, and we were able to successfully get through July, August, and September, so we're all good on that front, too.
Excellent. Future agenda items, if you know them now, holler them out, otherwise email Mr. Alveer or myself. We have no executive session planned for this evening, but we do have one planned for Thursday at 5:30.
I'm sorry, I should have updated you. That, that hearing has been, the parents do not wish to have that take place.
We do not have one Thursday at 5:30.
So there will be no need for a future meeting.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn by Jim and Rachel. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. I want to thank the public for their time and their interest.
You so wish.